So if you come across anything, just call me. I mean, the guys are helping with the sandbag and doing that stuff, so.
Thanks.
No, I know where I see, but I didn't, I was just.
All they get in here and then get started.
Yeah, I was. Isn't talk. I got this island. And. They lay down some of your lay down. The kids just scabbed. Be a lot easier for people to get in now.
But I'm sure they won't happen. I'm sure she'd let me know if I did.
All right. Good morning, everybody. It is April first, twenty twenty five in oh, two A M. County Court is now in session. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ask the gentleman if you remove your hats, please. Your hat, sir, please. Um, so we're kind of little bit of a juggle here this morning. We were anticipating that we would recess at ten o'clock, basically get going and then just right away recess because of planning meeting for the flooding. But they canceled that meeting this morning, but we'd already advertised that we were gonna go to ten thirty. So we have a half hour here that, uh, do you wanna go ahead and get into the agenda? Or you just wanna maybe, uh, just community discussion and whatnot for, for a while or?
I would recommend we go ahead. And open up. Public comment particularly as it relates to the flood right now and have a conversation and then maybe go back and do the other stuff.
That's fine. We'll do that then. Um, we don't wanna exclude anybody that might be coming later at ten thirty. So when we get to that point, if anybody else shows up, we'll give that public comment opportunity again at that time. So I guess we can start off, maybe we can start off with a little bit of update on where things are at. There's Congressman Benz, but I'm, I'll calling back. I've talked to him about three or four times already, so I think I can catch up with him later. Anyway, so obviously, um, we're working diligent as we diligent as we can. Uh, we have construction crew working on the dike that's north of town that caused or, or was the beginning of all the flooding that happened around brought North Broadway. And then ultimately, uh, down south or north date and, uh, into the east side of Burns, uh, Riverside Drive and all the way basically working the way to Highway seventy eight. They're probably about half, little over halfway to Broadway from where the dike, uh, intersects with the river or that joins at the river. And the plan is for that to go all the way to Broadway. And then, um, the sandbag from Broadway West along the rest of the levee there. Uh, the concern was that the, that we build that dike up along that part, which would then just push the water further down and cause a problem somewhere else. So we're trying to take care of that whole east-west portion of the dike. Um, the city of Burns, obviously, I can't speak for them, but they've had some, some sewer system problems and have asked people in Burns to limit their sewer use, whether it be showers or, or toilets or, or any water use. The water system, as far as I know, as of right now, in Burns is secure. They did have a water main break this morning and they're still waiting, I think, gonna have some testing on that.
Yes, the someone ran into a fire hydrant. So they had a nice geyser. That is why there was low water pressure in that area, the area where it was struck. That is a pressurized line and since I believe they've been able to fix it, everything should be back to normal. We will be doing testing just to confirm, but we do not expect any kind of issues with the water source.
Was the fire hydrant in an area that was experiencing flooding or was it dry area?
Not sure. I can't speak to that.
Okay. So. Working, dealing with things, Burns, everybody. Um, our, our road department has been working on this for several days now. From last weekend hauling dirt, making a berm along Foley Drive and filling sandbags and monitoring the rest of the county. And, um, we appreciate their service and time. Um, there's so much going on, I'm probably, I'm probably forgetting it, most of it. But I'll just open it up. If there's anything else, Commissioner Frank, you wanna add or?
Nothing to add on the flooding. I think you covered it pretty well.
Um, I've mostly gotten good calls on, uh, positive comments about how the communities pulled together, how the partners, uh, local partners and then our other partners have come together, that emergency management's doing a good job, that the Sheriff's Office is doing a great job, you know? We've got help from other counties, um, all that stuff. But, uh, and I went by the memorial building this morning and checked on shelter and they're doing well. But the two things they mentioned was, um, they will probably want some mental health, you know, support. And they'll be looking around if it, you know, if it's gonna be a long haul on, on someone to cater some food. Right now, they're just buying food at the store and just, you know, but they don't have the water cut up, turned on there. So things like that, just the things that will be problem solved as we go. But, um.
Mental health and logistical support.
Yeah, meals related. Thank you.
Again, there's probably a hundred things. And as I sit here and think what I wanna make sure everybody's aware of, it'll, it'll come to me gradually. But I want everybody to know that our elected, state elected officials have been in contact. Representative Owens and Senator, um, McLean from District Thirty and District Sixty. They're actually submitting today. Today's the deadline. They're submitting, uh, capital, uh, project requests on behalf of Harney County and the city of Burns. Uh, the ask for each is three million dollars for us and three million for Burns. We'll see what comes out in the long run to help, um, help pay for the work that we're doing now and the recovery work that we're gonna need afterwards. I've had phone calls from the governor. The governor is briefed by her O E M staff on a regular basis and she's informed and up to date on, on what's going on, offers whatever support we need, you know, give them a call. Uh, Senator Merkley, Senator Wyden, Congressman Benz, all of them have reached out. Um, again, I've had calls just today from Senator, from Congressman Benz and, um, Senator Merkley this morning. So they're all in touch. Their staff is in touch. We're trying to keep them informed as to the situation and what's going on. Discussing with the sheriff and other leaders, uh, Burns and Hines, about maybe doing some kind of a, uh, a recorded message to, to Harney County with, uh, status updates on city level and county level information. Uh, they, some people had asked the sheriff about maybe a town hall, but everybody's super busy. I hate to, I hate to bog people down with a town hall at this point right now. So we do want, we are working on and strategizing and developing talking points and whatnot on information to get out to the community, um, probably today. I'd like to see that out today myself. So, um, all the support from the state agencies, O E M, um, Oregon State Fire Marshals. Um, gee, I know I'm probably missed two or three different alphabets there, but, um, anyway, I, I think the response from the state has been really good. Um, they're, they're stepped up. The state stepped up with money already. The part of this project down there on the dike is actually being funded by O E M and a part of it, the county's gonna have to pick up, but we're already getting some help with that. Yeah, again, I'll think of it as it comes to me here throughout the meeting.
I would take an opportunity to recognize some of the individuals and the entities that I noticed have made a big deal through this effort. Ty Richardson with Burns Public Works has been running point on it since the beginning and that department's worked their tail off. Eric Trishella and our road department has been going twenty-four hours a day since this began. Law enforcement, the sheriff's department, Burns Police Department, Heinz Police Department, the fire departments have all been running their tails off. Melinda Todd with Emergency Management has done a phenomenal job. Uh, I think it's Sage Valley Congregation, but the local Mennonites ran the sandbagging station for several days and called in another congregation out of Idaho. And I know there's a lot of other people that work their tails off too, but I just thought we should recognize some of those people that really stuck out, stuck out.
Absolutely. But Chris or Doran, anything else?
No, nothing else.
So I think maybe we'll.
Uh, just real quick, so it's on record, um, anybody in the flooding areas that needs, um, information, the information line is five, four, one, five, eight, nine, zero, one, one, two. It's not a canned message. Uh, right now, I believe Kelly Singh, who's our political person, is answering the phone to provide direct information and will answer any question we have. Um, and, and it's been working fantastic. So that is the information line for flooding resources.
Uh, one more time, the number?
Five, four, one, five, eight, nine, zero, one, one, two.
And if we haven't already, we'll have that on our social media.
Absolutely.
Please. But I think we'll move into maybe some public question and answer here.
Just one, every time that I've been down the, the, um, standing station, uh, again, um, the, um, Mennonites have always been there in, in full force. And there's been some other groups, a baseball team was there yesterday. Um, so that I know there's other, um, groups there. Um, the Mormon Church has had a big following down there doing the same thing. So again, I'm sure there's others, but those are the ones that I've noticed when I'm down there. So just wanna make sure that they're recognized.
And, and our senior center hub has been providing really good support out to the shelter area at the fairgrounds in the memorial building.
So to move into kind of before we get maybe to, um, public comment, question and answer a little bit. Chuck Lynn would like to give some kind of historical information on the Highway twenty, construction and historical perspective on it.
Yes, uh, where I live is next to the river and right behind the levee that broke and let the water come in. Somebody in my family has lived there since fifty-one. And so I've been acquainted with it since then. So fifty-one and fifty-two flooded town and went all the way up to the U S bank. So that's when they put the fifty-two, they put the levee in. The levee went from seventy-eight down to, uh, Stan Cliff. And then they put that levee in.
Did that, did that follow the river?
Yes.
Is that a levy that followed the river?
It followed the river, the full way. Then in two thousand eleven, when we had the flood, I found out I was talking to people and, and there was an older gentleman who was still alive then that worked for the city and they said, he told me that when we put the levy in, then the city took care of it. Every year was able to drive down it and do whatever needed to maintenance on it. Then about early seventies or so, administrator come in and said, we don't need to do that anymore. So they quit doing it. So after that, people started building stuff out on it. And you look at your property and like my property, it goes to the middle of the river. So people quit, build out on the levy, push stuff off of the river and help slow it down. Then in ninety-nine, the state come in and they filled the bar ditch from Triangle Park to the river. And I asked, I went out there and I said, what are we doing? And they said, it's not supposed to run water. I said, my God, man, that dig is four feet deep. It runs water. On my driveway, there was two culverts, twenty inches around. They raised that up and put one covert in twenty inches around. And there was like that, all the way to Triangle Park, it drained the water out. Went down Bay Street, they actually had at the bridge, a high elevated covert that would allow water to go back into the river. Ninety-nine is when they did this. And that's when they put the bridge in. The bridge is designed for the water to go over the top and even leave them. There was two gentlemen standing there in two thousand eleven. And they were dumping pit run right by the garden. I said, what's this for? Well, we're gonna block off the road so the water don't go into town, let it run over the bridge. I said, why is it supposed to go over the bridge? Well, that bridge was designed for the water to run over the top. And I said, tell me how the water can run over the top when you got a levy on one side and the banks are water on the other side. And they threw their hands up in the air like that. They said, they come from Salem, not from us, we're from the Corps of Engineers. And then at the same time, they did this in ninety-nine, past Bridges driveway, there was a big bridge there that allowed the cows to go back and forth to the fields. And I'm gonna say it was at least ten feet wide and eight feet deep. Well, ninety-nine, they took that out and put a thirty-inch covert in. I mean, this all comes from Salem. There's nobody, nobody protested or said, what are we doing here? Kenny Brinkley and I were the only ones that said anything about it. And like Kenny said, you look at the Highway seventy-eight and from the bridge on the Silvus down to the Grange Hall, there's five bridges. There's a reason to have five bridges in there. So, yeah, it's just basically, that's, that's what has caused all the backwater on this. And that bridge should be taken out. I went over to Stan Cliff Bridge and you can see a free flow underneath it. You go to Highway seventy-eight, you can see a free flow underneath it. You go to the bridge there on Highway twenty, it's got a beam down there that far. There's no way the water can get by it. It's more than that. Eighteen inches or maybe two feet. Kenny and I fought this from the start. It's been going on since nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for the gentleman that just joined us at ask first. Did you remove your hats, please? Did remove your hats, please?
Oh, sorry.
Um, and then, and then also because Mr. Brinkley is right along that there, if you have any kind of to tail on to Mr. Lin's.
Uh, well, like I told you earlier, if you guys stop at my mailbox and stand there, the water's three to four feet higher on the west side than it is on the east side. And there used to be a bridge, cattle crossing is what it was. They've, to their credit, they've put culverts in, but they just can't handle it. And, uh, we need to provide someplace for this water to go. Once it goes through the highway, um, under the highway or over the highway, it just dissipates out in the meadows out there and it doesn't harm anybody. When we cut the highway the first time, there was a fellow that lives out on seventy-eight who's videoing us. And I asked him, I said, what's going on? And he says, I just wanna have proof. Would you guys flood me? And I saw him about a week later and I says, well, did you wash away? And he says, no. He says, I didn't even know you did it really, if I wouldn't have been there. Cause it disperses when it gets into those meadows. Like I say, I've been beating this dead horse since nineteen ninety-nine and I don't think it's gonna get out.
We'll talk to those that make the decisions. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, Harney County, Malheur County and Grant County are all part of the Southeast Area Commission on Transportation C Act, um, of which I'm a, a board member of. And at the next meeting, I'm gonna bring up this, this Highway twenty issue right here and, um, I got a feeling that, that, uh, yeah, that they're not gonna wanna hear it probably.
I understand that, you know, and.
But what we, what we need to come up with some solutions.
Yeah, you run, you run the calculations and I'm sure there's enough culverts there to run that much water if they were up. You know, they're what, three feet, four feet of material. I talked of them just so they don't get crushed from the traffic. But the water's gotta go down to them, build up in my field to get enough push to push it through there. And, uh, you know, if you look back at the archives, I couldn't find it. I printed it one time, but uh, if you look back at the archives in nineteen fifty-two, my wife's grandmother, and this is the only place we could ever find where she couldn't go out. She said that I have, the road has, uh, water on it. I need to go out the back. And the very next day she said, oh, the water's down. I can, I can go. You know, this, my road's gonna have water on it for probably a month before it drains down. When we cut the highway, it took two weeks to drain all of the water that they had backed up. And, you know, if we can get it to go past that highway bridge, work needs to be done on Riverside. And, uh, this same scenario, they, they just, well, they, there is filling up along Riverside Drive down with material.
Well, the river itself has got stuck.
Yeah, everybody needs to pull their boards every year.
Somewhere to go, it's two. Two of my neighbors, they pulled a boat out of the river. They pulled a great big cabinet out of the river. People are dumping.
There are, yeah, there's a boat that blew our dam there.
They're stuck in that river.
Yeah, from, from Highway twenty to Highway seventy-eight. It definitely needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah. And then we need to, maybe the water master to make a comment, some of our ranchers, you've got to pull your boards out. When you've got three foot of snow in the valley, you don't need your boards in the dam.
So we've, we've, we've delivered that message and asked, um, uh, individuals to pull their, their boards. But the water master is in a situation where he can't force. That's all he can do is.
Yeah, I know. That surprised me. I didn't realize they couldn't have made them pull boards.
Yeah. Another, uh, uh, inhibiting factor is the fact of getting access to the river because of, you know, I wish we still had a, a levy road or, or whatever that ran the whole span to get along there and have access to things when, when it's backing up. You have an ice dam or, or whatever. Um, and that would be great. That would solve a lot of problems if that was still in place. But, um, but that's another problem though, is we have to get permission from the property owners to get to the channel in order to do any work.
I was just gonna say, the last time this happened, I talked to Fred Whittle. Yeah, I told him about that.
All right, we'll, we'll move on a little bit though, gentlemen. I, I hear what you're saying. Um, and we'll convey that to the state and see what we can get agreed upon or get some work done or, or whatever that may look like. So, um, sir, I know you're seriously affected over along Stan Cliff, so.
Right. Only been here three years. Yeah, it's been a nightmare for me. My first year was.
I think I know your name, but would you say it for the record?
Pardon me?
Your name for the record.
Oh, John Martin.
Thank you.
Got it?
Got it.
Okay. Only been here three years. And it's like my first year, I came here in summertime. Beautiful. Love it here.
Surprise.
Oh, my God. I said, I couldn't find a better place. That year it snowed and when the snow melt, my house was like, I should have made a, a boat underneath because it was, I was thirteen inches in water. And I talked to my friend over there and he said, there's nothing we can do. I said, you built that road too high on Stan Cliff and what you did, you built it down. I said, you should have stuck some culverts in. And, uh, if they can't do that, why not widen it and dredge it? Go down deeper.
The river itself?
Yeah, the river itself. Cause with that, if you only can do two miles any year, what that's gonna do is as you start to go down, then it's gonna start relieving it.
More, more volume.
Right. And if there's land out there that nobody owns, make a river up, just divert it or add on to it so where it doesn't come all the way down straight to us. Because what we got now is a problem. And it's like I told you before, it's a can. You guys been kicking down the road? It's time to pick that can up and start resolving it.
I, I, I agree with you, but as I, as I mentioned, uh, we get into property owner, property owner rights, private property. We get into permitting from the state. Um, in your situation where you're at, if there were culverts right along there, that has dumped more water right into the field that we're dealing with the dike.
You're absolutely correct, but you can put those culverts up or down too. You don't have to put it, what you gotta do is just divert some of the water, not all of it. I ain't saying throw it all up there in that field, but you can go high, which is still gonna puddle, but it ain't gonna flood the house. Or you can go down to the middle where it'll sink some of it out, but not all of it.
Yeah, um, I, I hear what you're saying, but it, I, I still see that it's just gonna put, from where your perspective is and where your home is, it's just gonna put more water into that field, which with the raised, with the raised dike, I don't know, maybe that's what we do in, in years to come.
Water in that field right now.
It does. There's probably about.
Drag boat and go back and forth.
There's probably five to six feet on the other side of that dike.
It's pretty deep.
Yeah, I'm afraid they're just making a bomb, to be honest with you.
Well, that's.
You know, you're gonna be able to store more water. What happens next time? See, that's what's been going on.
And, 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 and Kenny, you're right. And I, I think there should be some controlled release at, at some point in time, you know, again, to relieve some of that to where it's not all at once and it floods, burns or whatever. But there, there needs to be some type of, of release there, whether it's a gate valve that is controlled by the city or, um, you know, an elevation controlled spillway or something. But eventually, again, I'm, I'm sure that the engineers have thought about that too.
So a couple, a couple of weeks ago, when we first asked the Corps of Engineers to come and look at our situation, I really wanted them here now so that they could see the effects of what we're dealing with. And they, they came, were here for, for a day, did a pretty good tour. And then when things got really bad, they came back and they've been here for the last three or four days. Um, I, I'm hoping out of their visit that we get some kind of assessment, evaluation, analysis, whatever that might be. But also in the fall, when the water is down and we obviously don't have all this, they can see what it looks like without the water and then that'll help develop some kind of a plan to move forward with that controlled release or, or whatever.
Another point, I have observed five thousand cubic feet per second coming down that river. Just going away. Now, when it gets to fifteen hundred to two thousand, it starts flooding everybody. And that's because it has no place to go.
Yeah.
Can I add something to a comment you made?
Yes, ma'am. Your name, please.
I'm Katie Belzor and actually I've worked a lot on some water issues. And O W R D does have the O R, there's an O R S which gives them the right to go on private property to monitor and to look at the water. However, in two thousand and eight, O W R D's commission have a policy book of procedures. And they, in that contradict the law. And they have said that they, if you have. And they have said that they, if you have a no trespassing sign up. Or if you have made it known, you don't want them coming on your property. Then they have to get permission first. That has started a lot of problems. And that's when I see. In our area, that a lot of problems has, has begun, was about the year of two thousand and ten.
Well, we have a willing landowner now, so now's the time to do it.
I bet we do. I bet everyone's willing.
Commissioner Frank has pretty much stepped in on a lot of the water issues that Commissioner um Shellman was dealing with and is getting schooled, schooled up on it, so I will. Defer that part of things to you, sir.
We, we have extensive work that we need to do for future mitigation. From exploring the possibility of dams and reservoirs up higher on the river, to changing some of the flow and how it flows through. Highways, but it'll be a huge financial burden and we'll need help from state and federal partners, but it's definitely on our radar and we continually tell them we. I even brought up to the Corps of Engineers the other day about if there were a way to control this up higher so that we could have consistent flow. That would not only benefit the agriculture list, but the refuge if we had consistent flow, and they said we'll come back. Later this year, we can take a look at that, that's, and that's getting kind of far out there, but.
They did a big study on that in the fifties and had it designed above Smith's place to put it in. And then some of the big landowners that had water rights and the refuge.
And the refuge.
Forced them to say, no, we're not gonna get enough water down for the refuge. We can't do that, we gotta have a free flow.
They got plenty now.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna re-explore.
Rob is that, you know, I, I've actually seen those plans. For that, and I understand the concerns from the landowners of, you know, the state, you know. Controlling their water to the point where they, you know, go, don't get what they should get or whatever. Um and if there's stipulations in there somehow, but I mean, I've seen the plans for that reservoir and it, it was. You know, it was real at one time, the discussions.
We're gonna explore every possible avenue and then that way, at least if we get some mileage on one. One area of it and not another, you can't get them to put those cattle crossings on the highway, but maybe. Look at reservoir or change in some things, but it'll definitely take partnership with the state and federal entities because. We don't have the money to do the major. Overworking that we need of our system.
I know it's gonna take time. But how much time are we looking at? I'm just throwing this out as a favor.
What's the government?
I'm sorry?
It's the government.
Well, now, I mean, it's now as a government because. You're taking taxes and I'm paying taxes on my property. So you guys are getting money as well, how much? Money are you guys gonna put into it, but how long is it gonna take? For, everybody's gotta think of something, I think all these minds are better than one. And everybody just gotta get together. And say, okay, this is the problem I'm having, I'm having, I'm having, and then put a plan together, how long will we look at, I'm just.
So, so monetarily speaking?
Yeah.
Finance speaking, if you look at the county's resources, dollar wise. Um we've got. I could probably squeeze a million and a half dollars and we're broke. That million and a half dollars is not gonna do this, that's why we're saying it's gonna take state and federal uh. Uh partners to, to, to fund and to, to, to design and, and everything else, so. The county. Just this incident alone. Is gonna deplete all of, in this year's budget is going to deplete all of the. Of the uh.
Contingency?
Yeah, contingency and discretionary funding that we have for this year, it's not gonna, and it's not, I'm looking at. Two hundred, maybe two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, and that's it, once, once we hit that mark, we really don't have anything to draw from. But, so, so, so when you, so when you're asking, you know, what, what can we do as the county with your tax dollars? I mean, I hate to say it, but not much.
Every time, uh I guess to. To address your question a little bit, every time that we have conversations. With federal representation or state representation, state government, every day for the last two weeks and even before that. These conversations had started because the writing was on the wall about this event that was gonna happen. And we pushed the severity and the urgency because it's a public safety issue, so this can't be a ten or twenty year project. That moves at government speeds when people's houses and their safety and possibly their life are in danger, so. We, we use that as a leverage point every time we have those conversations to try to expedite the process.
I'll say worth nothing if it's floating. I mean, I could put it up for sale tomorrow and people are, you know, wanna look at it.
Well, see, and that's another, that's another aspect of our, of our revenues. That, that the assessor has already said that they may have to go out. This next year and look at affected properties. And that may affect the revenues that we get in in property taxes, so there's another decrease in revenue that, that we may experience. So less funds to draw upon, less funds to use. You, your property, as you mentioned, if. You know, depending on what it, what it looks like when this is all over with. The assessment on it may be entirely different than what it was yesterday. So, and, and there's gonna be a lot of them that are that way. So it's just more, more financial hard times coming.
To me. And this is just me, cause I told you, I built roads before. I did it in Southern California. And. It's more like. Dredging that river or widening it, whatever you can do to. Out, take the water. And drop it down is gonna help it, is gonna solve the problem, I don't think so. Because from what I see, there's a lot of places that are underwater here and these people. The way the economy is. Can't afford it, they can't afford new carpet or do the electric to be over, anything like that. I mean, I'm doing my house over again and I'm wondering if I should keep on spending the money on it.
Yeah. So those same concerns, as I've mentioned, as I mentioned, the conversations with our, with our federal delegation, elected officials. Uh I've, I've conveyed those exact same sentiments to them that. Yesterday, as I was standing out on the dike, looking across at the houses that were affected. And I told, told one of them, I said, I'm probably looking at fifty homes right here, that a lot of them will not survive this. A lot of them will not survive this, so we're gonna be faced with not only the fact that our population is displaced. And where do we put that population? A lot of them are probably gonna move out of the area, cause we don't have housing available as it is. So we're gonna see a reduction in population, we're gonna see a reduction in kids in school. We're, you know, we're not gonna have those dollars in town for, for merchants for, for our economy. Um I mean, to be quite honest, I'm trying to paint as. Unrosy a picture as possible because they need to really fully understand, this is gonna affect us. Into the future, I, you know, I, I don't know, my crystal ball doesn't go that far, but this is. This is a major setback to Harney County and Burns and whatnot, and that's the picture I'm painting.
Doesn't build up, I mean.
You gotta have businesses and economy, you know, that are willing to come in here and. And invest in us, and we're working on that as well, but. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
In, in the short term, one thing that community members. Can do and will try to do a good job of keeping people informed, but our state representation is making. Making efforts to secure funding for us in this legislative session, and when those things come up for public hearing or public comment. It's a long ways to go, but to drive five hours over to Salem and tell your story about how your home is ruined goes a long ways with that, and so. We'll try to keep people informed, but hopefully if they can get some of those legislative bills. Or funding through, the community will be willing to go advocate on their own behalf.
And you can, you can submit written testimony as well, a, a person standing in front of them is always gonna be better, but an overwhelming. Uh show of written testimony is, is good as well. So let's move on, uh anybody else?
Can you put the map up that you had up earlier and do the dance, do the guides?
Okay.
And have the progress and show off the whole plan that we talked about earlier. Thank you.
Okay, I should be sharing to everybody out there as well, so. This is the um. Junction of Highway twenty and Foley. Highway twenty and North Broadway. Um and if you go out Highway twenty, uh Mr. Lynn's place is right here. And Mister. Um Brinkley's house is just on the other side, right back in here, right? Yep, so the, the dike that we're working on uh runs east and west. Right at the very end of North Broadway Street, it, it connects to the riverbank. Right, right here, if anybody's, everybody, whatever's familiar with where Ruthie's house was at, um. It's right behind her house on the, on the west side of the river. So that dike runs east to west all the way across, uh past North Broadway. Makes a jog north and then continues west again and connects with, with Foley Drive. The construction work that we have going on started at the east end of it here, next to the river. And is progressed over. Probably, I guess that might be two thirds of the way now to Broadway. The plan is to go all the way to North Broadway Street with it, and then from North Broadway on, they're out there. Putting up two feet plus of sandbags. Um the engineers felt that this north-south leg of it, because that's not where the pressure is. Granted, if the water pushed high enough, it would, it would go over it, but it's, the pressure is more down in this, this uh. Southeast corner, that's where the water wants to flow to is to the southeast. And that's where the pumping station is, the city of Burns has, has pumps in right there, they're, they're pumping water out of this field area into the river channel to. And they, they've been pumping for three weeks, trying to stay ahead of it, and they were making a little bit of ground, but. Over time, you just, you're not gonna, you're not gonna keep up with mother nature, sir.
There's gotta be a better system to, to drain that behind the levee. They've been doing it for years, it's kinda like. Well, it worked last year, let's do it again, and then could say it this year.
Yeah, your name, your name, sir, for the record?
Carl, Carlson. I live above the. Above the dike.
Up, up of Stan Cliff or?
No, I, he's there by our dam.
Okay, oh, okay, yours is that house back in the road there, okay. So, so your place would be right in here.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I have talked with the Burns Public Works Director on that, and I think it would be worthwhile that. Maybe out of some of these funds that we might get from the legislation, or we find the funds somewhere, to put in a permanent pump station right there. That, that can carry big volume and, and there's no power there, they're having to run generators and gas. Powered tractors and everything else to run their pumps. So to run a commercial power line back in there to power that pump station, and then as this water starts to come up, they could flip a switch and start pumping. And.
That makes a lot of sense.
And mitigate it before, or, or, you know, the, the more you can do, the better off you are down.
Yeah, everybody goes and looks and see what their setup is.
Yeah.
I don't know, they got six pumps, some of them.
Something like that. So I agree, and we have discussed that already, and I am willing to be a partner with Burns.
I feel better.
Uh, to uh, to try and get that established.
I know Eric brought it up and I agree with him.
So Patty McNeil, um we own the house that is on the. Second square, the dry, it looks like dry ground, which clearly it's not over on Foley.
Over here?
So the, the dam that, or the dike that you guys are working on is. Won't affect us, our, we were keeping up with the water until that dike got cut on the triage ground. And then that just let everything out on that field and it continues even today to pump over into the, into our house. So what can be done so the tribe doesn't get flooded? I, I, you know, uh collaboration wise, so that they don't cut dikes again to let out the water to. Flood the rest of us, which is what all hell broke loose, is what happened.
I, I made the phone call to the, to the tribal manager that evening when that happened and, and we didn't, we didn't have any forewarning of it.
I know.
And I realize and I, I totally understand, they had four or five feet of water and they needed to do what they needed to do to, to mitigate their situation. But I expressed that, you know, we're all in this together and, and. You know, we just need to find ways to, to get through it together. And, and even if we'd had a couple hours of notice before they did that, the damage was primarily already done to their lower housing area there. Um, if we'd had a couple hours to, to mitigate that, we might have been able to get. Our burn that we put up there a little further down the road or something. That as that water did collect and start to push across the road, we might have gotten ahead of it, I don't know, Eric, I mean, do you think we've?
And again, I, I just think communication um was a, a, a key part of that. Um you know, maybe one or two cuts, see what it does, you know, I, but seven, I, I. That's a little, a little much, but again, I, you know, it's, it's already happened, it's already done.
Well, so I'm just talking further up the river, so they don't get in the situation again, because if they do. They apparently have every right that they want to, to make that cut, and so they still won't protect a lot of these properties. And once that water starts flowing over, it's, you know, you're done.
Hopefully, we can pursue mitigation further up the river and we. Hopefully, they will be our partners in that, because obviously they were very affected by how this flow happened. So that is the plan, we've already reached out to them. To talk about. How to move forward on pursuing something.
There was a time, I'm gonna say three years ago. The Donald Lindsey. Got a hold of me and. Wanted to go look, there was a big log jam. Right in the, behind the reservation. There was a big log jam, there were dead cows in there and everything, and wanna know if we. Contribute money. To help take that out. And I went and looked at it, I said, why doesn't the reservation do anything? Well, they said they really didn't care.
Yeah. I. I know there's a lot of frustration, I know there's a lot of stress, I know there's uh. But I, I, I really would ask everybody, I don't wanna get into a finger pointing, I really don't, um it's not, it does not help, it's not productive. So I just would ask that we stay constructive and, and I, and I get your point, I, I totally understand, but, but let's, let's not go down that road, please.
To, to answer Patty's, but I, I think there's a, a better mousetrap for up there with. With the, the water flow, you know, I know it comes out of that one draw, um and that's the first. Bush, and then of course the river, uh and that's kind of the second one, so I know there's a better way to be able to get that water. Out of there, it, it's, it, it's a port of sound, um and it, it could be done better.
With that. With the levee where it goes up that canyon, that reservoir out there has washed out. So a lot of water don't get held back like it used to, and it does comes down through there.
You know, even, e- even if, I mean, if we had a full blown reservoir, that'd be great, but even going up the canyon, if there were water control points up the canyon that, that. You know, would control a little bit at a time and you could control the release, something is better than nothing, so, so that'll come down the road, hopefully. Um I, I, we need an assessment of the entire. From the, from the point it comes into Harney County to the point that it hits the lake, we need some kind of an assessment on, on what to do with the water.
And we need a lot of local input to that assessment.
Can I ask a question, Paul Davis, Albert Grant, sorry, um is this, would you, this, this probably you guys are asking about. Is this on the county jurisdiction or is this a state problem? I'm, I'm asking, what, what, what pool do you have?
Well, while.
Wayne here, if Wayne was the wrong reason, Wayne to you. Uh with wrong direction, reason I'm, that's all my thinking is, this is a good chance to see what these commissioners are gonna do, cause I've been. Really um disappointed with our previous commissioners, you know, let's hope these are the people that's gonna lead us out of this problem, because. This looks like it's been ongoing for years and our previous commissioners could have done something. There's been lots of problems over in Harney County, that's been addressed, I've got another problem here, not near as well. Problems you guys have, but I have problems and our previous commissioners have sat on their asses as far as I'm concerned, so I'm hoping these people can, can get, can lead us out of it. This looks like it's, it's very, these, these gentlemen know what the problem is and how to fix it. I'm hoping you listen, you'll make, make it right.
Absolutely, but. We can advocate for Harney County, I mean, I guess we need to look at what. Our authority is the county. And, and where we, where we can exercise that, really, is what we need to explore. And I agree, totally, but I, but I think also. Trying to go into this issue hot and heavy. Will close doors for us, so it's gonna take those partnerships with our local represented um. State elected officials. And our federal partners and, and everybody. Um we're never gonna lift this. This by ourselves, but I agree with you, I, I agree, it's, it's gonna be on our shoulders, that's what we're sitting up here for. Any, any other, sir?
Um Scott Franklin. I, I've seen this before, but not to this extent.
Um, Scott Franklin, I I've seen this before, but not to this extent, and there's been issues on the river and whatnot, but. And it seems like in six months, this will all be forgotten. So I just hope the push continues, because it it seems to get forgotten pretty fast.
Yeah. Well, it, it's affected a lot more people than just.
Yeah, um. I agree, people have short memories, and the support that you have going into something six months or nine months from now, will support as much emphasis won't be there. And again, that'll be upon our shoulders to make sure that we keep that push going.
What about drainage systems? Is there any in uh Burns?
Well, there's some, that's part of what happened with South Gate, because there is a a ditch system, a drainage system that goes down South Gate and works its way across town. Uh, but over time of not being used and not being needed. Prior to this event, people were putting their yard clippings in it and and maybe put dirt in it so they could drive across it or whatever, there's a lot of obstructions in that. In that drainage, um and again, we need to find, you know, whether it's through ordinances or or where the authority lies. To be able to go through and and inspect and make sure that those those drainage systems are open. When we need it.
Bill, can I ask, the canal that you guys are talking about, who has jurisdiction on it, it looks like, do you have a canal, um remember, story about the canal co-op or. Like ditch board, do you have a ditch board on this canals, who who?
It's DSL, but I don't know what's that, isn't it? I mean, well, not the, you know, not the drainage in town, but the actual river, it's DSL.
Yeah.
So you you.
In order to do, in order to. Officially. In order to do any work along on the river itself, its banks, we have to have permits from DSL, Department of State Lands. But again, you know, hopefully, maybe this event, it the silver lining that's under there is that all the landowners that border the river. See the urgency and see the need for some for some work on it on the canal. And and we can get some agreements and be able to get in and get access and.
I can't see why a landlord would argue about it, I can't get that much.
I will, I will say, though, part of the problem too is some some places along between twenty and seventy-eight. Property owners have encroached upon the canal. Now, getting around behind their properties to to assess that, to widen it back open, might be only. Some major undertakings, I mean, I can think of a few of them right off the top of my head that are pretty close to the riverbank.
Yeah. Since fifty-two, when they put that levy in, the city was allowed to drive down the levy all the way to Stan Cliff. And they worked on that until administrator come in here in the early seventies and we don't have to do that anymore. Then people started building out all the levy and doing whatever they wanted.
Excuse me?
Yeah, not responsible.
Yeah, no, no, and we, the very first event that we went through this this year. Um, that was my first frustration was, OWRD says where, who gets the water? DSL says who can work on the on the banks, I'm I'm like, whose responsibility is it? And basically, what they come back to and told me was it's the landowner's responsibility, but they have to get the permits to do it.
It's who's your, your authority?
The landowner, property owner.
And then the problem comes um with some of the extreme environmental groups.
Yes.
When you start talking about doing something to the river or to dirt and water a different way, you've got Water Watch, and you've got all these other. Environmental groups, they're gonna start fighting in.
Yeah, special interest groups that.
Yeah, we see that in the water planning that's going on.
Yeah. But we can't continue to go through this. Every year or whatever.
It's averaging, actually, went two thousand eleven, two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty, twenty-three. It was almost like it were six or seven years, look out, here it's gone.
Just add some real quick, I'm a brick stock for the Harney County Building Initiative, um I live on the climb through. Uh, just outside of Monte Falls in Kino, and I've dealt with the Department of State Lands for my property. And I will tell you to reach out to them, they're actually pretty easy to get ahold of from my experience, and I would tell you to reach out to them and have conversations, because. They will get you in touch with the person to talk to about your property and the river, they they actually have been very helpful. With boat ramps and a lot of things that we've had issues with, so I would just say to reach out to them yourself.
I assume the problem is none of us are on the river for us to be the ones dealing with that, though.
I'm just saying, the folks that are on it, I would tell you to.
Well, um Chuck, your property goes, it goes all the way over to the river, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you're one member in here that has Mr. Brinkley on the other side of the river, so we do have a few people in here that have property that are. Right down that middle line of the river.
Down the middle of the river.
Yeah. All right, this, I I I don't mind this, I will give all the time we can, but uh that'll move along and make, see if anybody else has anything. Anything else?
There's no estimation of how long this is gonna date, I'm just, I mean, I'm just saying, let's just give it. A figure, it's been thirty-five years now, from what I hear. I mean, my neighbor came to me and he's flooded out, I mean, even inside his house, he said, I've been here thirty-five years. Complaining about this, so how far, how long are we looking at now?
You know, and this is a total speculation.
Okay.
But I I would venture to say we probably wouldn't be able to see any work get done for three years at least, that.
You've dealt with DSL, I mean, I it, I mean, again, there there are good contacts and and they'll show up, they'll. They'll be there and in a, you know, a minute's notice, but to actually get in the stream of water, it's. It's, it's, he's been dealing with it on the big owl board for how long, Al Paul?
They they did tell me that there's been a lot of rule changes in the last couple of years that have. Changed things, lessened some of that stuff, so it's definitely worth.
Yeah, oh, no, I mean, you're gonna have to anyway, and you gotta go in with a positive attitude, but I. You know, you got, you gotta be realistic too, and it's gonna take, it's gonna take a lot of pressure from, you know, this governing body to people at the state. Level, um if you have to go higher, go higher, but it it's gonna take. Collaborative effort to get it done, it really is, and um I, you know, it's the only way to start it.
Even if you're not a property owner though, I would tell you to reach out.
Well, it affects our whole entire community, so.
You only have five months to get it done, five months of bitching is only gonna have the DSL listening, so.
I'm estimating maybe if they, you know, everybody works together, they should have, at least in their minds. Within five years, what they need to do, but five months, all this water will come back.
Five months would be great.
Now, listen, five months, the water level will come down, and as Scott's saying, this project will probably go away. I've had a big issue with DSL, you gotta get it by the air right now and put it in the middle of something, right now.
I I don't think, I don't think the permitting process part of it is gonna be. The issue, I mean, we're gonna have to jump through the hoops and the hurdles that they say we have to. But I don't think the permitting side of it is gonna be the issue, it's the plan that we're gonna have to come up with a plan, because they're gonna wanna see a plan.
Right.
As to what our proposed action is on on that, on that canal, on the river. Um, so that's where the Corps of Engineers, they're here, wanna make sure they come back July, August, whenever it's it's accessible, and we can get in there and look at everything. Um, and then start to derive a plan from that, we have to, you, we can't just go to DSL and say, we wanna do some work on the river. We're we're gonna have to have a detailed plan of what kind of work on the river and where. Um, so, so that's why I'm saying probably Corps of Engineers comes back this summer, and we take a look at it, and then. We start to work on that plan and decide where the work needs to be done, so. You know, I I would, I would say probably the soonest we're gonna have any kind of document of a plan would be. Next spring, at the earliest, at the earliest, and that's with a lot of steady pressure on on keeping it rolling.
But that's when. Where you get the money from.
That, well, but that's the next step, the next step, you 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 get the plan, the next step, we gotta go out and find the the revenue for it.
Exactly.
And.
People are moving out, you ain't gonna find it here.
No, we won't.
One thing we can do this year, as soon as it gets dry enough, and I'll give permission to put the power poles up to put a permanent. Pumping station there, and that would help a bunch.
Well, and I think, I think the overall perspective and like what Chuck's saying and and what you're indicating, there's gonna be phases.
Yes.
You know, you're gonna look at this, I mean, again, dredging the river, I, is is that gonna solve the problem? I, you know, we don't know that for a hundred percent, but um. That can be, it can help, and again, I think there should be phases, um, you know, where there's a look at the, you know, the old drawings of the reservoir that, you know. Could have, should have happened, um, you know, the dredging of the river, um, other things above, you know, um, by the tribe, you know, could be another phase, I mean, there it's. You're gonna have to do it in phases.
Bill, am I right in thinking that once the Corps of Engineers decides that this is an emergency? Can't they just do it?
Well, if we could get them to that point, if we can get them to that point to make that determination, I think they couldn't have a lot of power, have a lot of authority there, yeah.
I remember when, when the Sandy River blew out. And I was working for the BLM at the time and and had a problem with a little blitzen, and they said they couldn't take any equipment down there and clean it out. But on a salmon steelhead stream, there was two D eight cats pushing that river back to where it used to be and. So they've got, if they declare an emergency, I think they can get after it.
Well, we'll have, we'll have those discussions with them now, really. So, so future in the next month, um and this, we've been telling everybody that we talked to as well, that, you know, our. Elected officials, we don't see these beginning of these kind of water levels until mid-April to first of May, normally. We're a month early on on this, this, these water, where we're at, well, this is way beyond what we even normally would get, but we're we're still early. And the mountains still have a good four to five feet of snow north of town that's still gotta come off. Um, I did see some pictures the other day, and maybe this is why we saw this this major influx. But the photos that you showed me, the aerial photos up around Hay Creek area, in the, in the immigrant. Snow's all off of that area, there's some north-facing slopes that have still got a little snow on them, but it's all brown dirt. It's what's where the fire was at, and there was nothing to hold it back, but but um maybe that's why we got this major flow too, that that's. Put us in the situation where we're at, I'm not hydrologist, and I I'm just speculating, but but maybe that's what put us in this position. But we still have more to come, and and it's not over with. So again, we're conveying, we're conveying those messages to people, to the leadership as well, Deb.
So you said that you need a plan, why don't you dig out this nineteen fifty's plan? And start shoving it in people's face?
Well, and that might be the starting point, that we.
And start using it and revamping it to modernize it and save yourself some work.
There's no sense of starting from, from start, absolutely, I agree.
How can we help you, you guys?
Can I just ask a question real quick? That's all right. Um, there's a rumor going around, and I came up here to find out for sure. That the county's received eight million dollars to deal with this emergency, because I.
If the check's in the mail, I haven't gotten it yet.
It's coming.
That's the, that's the first great, we got, OHJ went up, since you know that OHJ or EOC or one of the emergency management people went to the. Count, to the hospital yesterday and told them that Burns is shutting off the water, were you aware of that?
No, because I'd heard yesterday evening, when the news come out about the sewer system failure and the pump station at the South Egan.
Right.
Going down, that there was, there was consideration that the water may be turned off, and then as of this morning, I hadn't heard anything over overnight. As of this.
And they talked to the city and they told them, yeah, that the Judy and Ty were there at the table when that was decision was made to have that conversation. And I just want you all to know that we were not at the table, we have not been at any table unless we forced our way in.
That, that's, that's, Judy, that's not correct, though, that is not correct. You, the table is open to everybody, and every one of those meetings that we've had, the the city has been invited to. And and Ty has been, and Ty has been to most, the Public Works Director has been to most of those meetings.
Yeah.
So the chair is there waiting for you guys to fill it.
Okay, but and I've been at every one that hasn't been canceled since, they got my correct email address, before that, I had no idea they were having them. But anyway.
Well, you were at three weeks ago downstairs in Melinda's office, when we were still holding it there, you were at that meeting.
I was.
And that's the first meetings that we had over here at the EOC on East Washington or West Washington, you were, you were there. So, so there's been access for the city.
There has been, but the decision to tell people we're shutting off the water, nobody asked us that.
Well, and again, it was, the way I heard it, was it was the text message that I got, I could pull it up, is that they're considering shutting it off. I checked first thing this morning, and uh I got. Well, the this morning, the message I got this morning when I checked was that Ty said that we will not shut the water off.
Yeah, that's because they finally called him and asked, but but before that, nobody, the, can you, I'm just saying. And and I don't mean to be really critical, but the communication has not been real good, I I would like better.
Well, so that's where I'm saying, there's a place at the table for Burns, to to come up and be there.
Yeah.
If we have to do five separate messages to to different entities, it takes longer to get the messaging out. So I invite you, I I invite you to to assign somebody from the city to be a part of the EOC. And and you're there.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll be there at every meeting, it doesn't get canceled, but they need to let us know before the meeting time, unless they cancel, because. You know, you show up at a meeting and nobody's there, and then you find out that it was canceled ten minutes after the time the meeting, the meeting was supposed to start.
Yeah, well, and I, I I understand that, I apologize for that, for on behalf of the EOC, but there. There's a lot of information running through there, I mean, I I, you just have to have a little grace, please, I guess is what I would say.
And I will, but there's a lot of misinformation going through there, and and it's frustrating to us that have to deal with the problem.
Well, I I will say that that the EOC was first established here at the office on on West Washington. And I could see it growing to a point that that facility and that space was not adequate, so I reached out to the Forest Service and and. Asked to use their conference room out at BISI, and they're moved out there now, I think it will greatly help in their structure. And their organization and everything of having more room to 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 work out there, so, and they just moved last night, so.
And and the council chambers are available always, and we we've got a large group, and we've got Zoom set up in there, and you know, we'd be.
Yeah, and that was one of the advantages to this space, is the audio visuals all built into it, and you know, to facilitate meetings better and everything, so.
Sure.
So, um, we need to, I know, and I've talked to Melinda, um, she's got help, she's got help down there. But I think maybe we need to send somebody else down admin-wise and administrative support to help with the emails, um, we do have PIO. And they, that they coordinate with everything and get the message out. I contacted the sheriff this morning and and said, uh, well, some people. I contacted him and then he replied back, but he said that some people have been asking for maybe a town hall type of thing, and I'm not sure I wanna do that right now to pull everybody off of a. Off of what they're doing to do a town hall.
And we need more information.
But but what I, what I did propose to him was that we sit down and invite Burns and Hines. And and the sheriff and I, and we sit down and do a recorded message that we can put on Facebook and and YouTube and everything and and. So they're working on talking points right now, and we're gonna do that, I write into county court, I hadn't had a chance to call you yet, but obviously. I wanted to make sure that Burns and Hines was invited today.
Great, that's fine, yeah, and I I just, I didn't wanna have a town hall until we get to the point where I can say something besides, you know, um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um. Let's move into, like, again, I don't mind, the topic is worth, is worth visiting as much as we need to. But I think if there's nothing other else real, real direct to this topic, that we'll move into our regular agenda.
Or is there any other part of comment, or were you gonna?
Yeah, if, that's what I'm saying, if there's.
Public comment time.
Well, let us get through, but yeah, we'll go ahead, we'll just go ahead and move into that, and then we'll take care of our regular stuff, so let's just go ahead and move into regular public comment then. Anybody?
Um, I I understand Paul Davis again, I understand your budget meeting's eighth, that's next week, is that right?
Yes. That's our budget committee meeting, that's the first meeting, first meeting.
Official budget.
Yeah.
And that's where you're addressing the funds. Um, question I have for you is, we're talking about the Andrews Road, um, moving the Andrews Road there. Is that, are you gonna put that in the budget this year or where are we at on that?
Um, I'll, I'll tell you right now, in my budget, it is not in my budget. I do not, I had to cut almost two hundred thousand dollars out of other departments and other capital purchases, everything, in order to get it to balance to zero to where we're at. I don't have the money to, to do a project like that.
Ever?
Well, no, I'm not saying ever, but this, this, this coming budget care.
I know, Bill, it's been seventeen years since this project was supposed to be done. To answer the question, how move fast, I can't move, sometimes they don't move very fast, it's not a big problem. I hope you guys get your budget. But uh, we can't wait another seventeen years for it to come down there, so are we gonna address it or are you guys gonna drop it?
Well, I, like I said, I can't, I can't fund it this year. Um, the plans are on the table, it's been surveyed and everything for that to happen. Um, if, you know, maybe it's gonna be another ask, maybe it's a congressional, a federal congressional ask or something along those lines to get, to get funding, and I agree with the funding that we have coming to pave uh, that portion of road, that we need to do it before, because if we pave the existing road, then why, why waste that money?
And I have spoken with the Federal Highway, like I told you I would, um, and asked them, requested that before they start doing any drawings or any permanent plans, that we have a safety engineer come take a tour. And I'm gonna show them, like I said in that last meeting, I'll show them the three concerns of, of the public, safety issues, and get feedback from them. And I, I told you I would do that, and I have done that, and I've asked that re- request from them. Um, and she said she was looked into it, but like I told you before, with the federal government right now, she at that time didn't know if she would be there to finish or even start the project. They're going through people that quick, so um, will this happen in twenty-six, twenty-seven, like they got slated? I, I have no idea. I wouldn't hold my breath. Eric, I understand, I just wanna know if you guys are gonna drop it, because I feel like if you drop it, you're ignoring it, so are we gonna ignore it, or are you gonna?
Well, I think it's unfair to say that, because you're talking to a group of people that haven't, that hasn't been on our plate for seventeen years.
Excellent. So what can we do to help? Burnt.
Win the lottery and give us a big.
I, I think it would, that's, I feel like we're in the position where any, any large projects we wanna do, we're gonna have to ask for help from state or federal partners. And I don't have a problem when we talk to Vance or Merkley or Wyden, saying we have this road project, it's been in limbo for twenty years, and we need help on that, and Vance is very familiar with that project, because when he was a state congressman, he said the gas tax was gonna pave it. And so I don't have a problem bringing that up with their representation, but I would recommend reaching out as well, so that they hear this, not just one voice. This is a project for twenty years, it's a public safety issue.
Okay, so give you guys some leverage here. So, yeah, I've talked about there's tourism, I think is the issue why roads and business fair. But I seen, witnessed something the other day that really brought my attention, and we had a fatality out of the Albor Desert there. Ambulance was sent down, it came from the north, south. So to give you some of that, when you say that it's not important to pave the north end, I, Bill, Eric, please, take this advantage and move the pavement to the north end.
I, I love, like I said, I, I tried, I, I tried to make that sale. I tried to make that sale for the north end, because that is what, I mean, it's in line to go next. To be fair with the citizens down there, I have, I, I, I put that on there from Juniper Ranch to Man Lake, the lake, at thirteen miles, and they did not buy. So I, I, I tried this out and they bid, because of the activity on the desert.
And, and, and I can guarantee you, they had, they had two proposals to look at. And the funding that they, that this was for, was earmarked for, was access to public lands. And they looked at it and said, okay, this one, this one paves how many miles?
Thirteen on the, on the top, and then this one does ten to get to the Frog Springs.
So this pays thirteen miles of, it, it doesn't really lead you to access and recreation on public lands. Coming from the south end, it leads you to the Albor Desert, which is access to recreation on public lands. That's the way they look, and, and you're talking about people that are sitting back in Washington DC and had, and had no idea the difference between the two. But that's how, I guarantee you, that's how they made their decision.
We have to advocate harder, and so it's helpful to have citizens say, these are our needs that need to be addressed.
Because EMS services do not come from the south, our EMS services come from the north, so.
Highway seventy-eight.
Highway seventy-eight, right down the face, and then that's how, that's how the ambulance is gonna get there, they have every single time that been sent out. That's how our police department, whether it's sheriff or state, that's exactly the route they use, and they've done it, and you've been there, you know exactly what I'm saying. That's exactly the way they're going to come down.
Yeah.
And so if they can't make it down that road, then some lady who woke her side by side out there on the Albor Desert, because she got there on the, from the, paved on the south end, laid there and died, because it took them two and a half hours to get there.
And, and again, I mean, they, and he's exactly right, they're just looking at these proposals, and we're going up against proposals for Anthony Lakes.
Yeah.
Or Crater Lakes, or somewhere like that, where they have astronomical numbers and, and vehicle counts. And so we're at a disadvantage to begin with, so to even get chosen was, I, out of left field. I honestly, and to be perfectly honest with you, honestly, I think that they, we need to quit putting in for new projects like this and cover the infrastructure that we have. You drive that road all the time that goes from Fields to Denial, or from Fields on up to Calo, eventually that road is gonna have to be repaved. That's where we need to be putting the money, where we already have asphalt and we need to protect that infrastructure. But you gotta play the game, and if you don't play the game, you're not gonna be at the table. So you've gotta throw these proposals out there and hope it hits.
But Eric, this proposal makes no sense. We're gonna bring all the public in, and they're gonna get hurt down there, and the ambulance comes from the north, and it's gonna have issues getting there.
I, I, you got a strong argument, but you, you might as well not, you might as well just call them up and tell them, we don't want it, I don't wanna pave it.
I don't want you guys paving the south end. You're bringing more people to us, and then the ambulance is gonna have trouble getting there, don't.
I, you're, I mean, you're one voice, I hear it, I get it, but.
Lives down there, that's the only voice you're getting, is me.
I get, I get other phone calls, so.
I hear you, we under, we do, we, we understand, uh, to be honest, uh, working in law enforcement and, and responding to that area and patrolling that area, um, Google Maps is gonna bring most everybody to it from the north end, off of Highway seventy-eight. If you, you know, if you plug it in and say, give me a route, that's the way they're gonna go. Um, I, I think, while, while would it have been better, public safety wise and everything, to have it from the north end? Um, I don't think it would be wise to turn it down from, from what we did get. Um, I mean, at least it gets another section of it done, that we eventually maybe will have the whole thing done.
But if they're not gonna move it, then public safety is the issue.
If they're not gonna move.
They don't need to go through Andrews, they don't need to bypass there, and things surround a point, then somebody's going to fly off, pop down, surround a point, going eighty miles an hour, and then.
They already do that in sections, they do it at Red Point, they do it at the end of the pavement. I mean, they do it anyway, and there, there are gonna be, I mean, you don't wanna see it, but there are gonna be traffic accidents down there. No matter what you do, if you pave the north section, there would still be somebody that would probably come down there. Would there be more? I don't know.
We used to have to use rocks for wheels, now we use rubber, so we've been improved in technology. You don't, you can't say we can't improve the problem, we just gotta live with it?
Improving it is, is paving it, I don't have to go do maintenance on it. Does it, uh, you know, save a life? No.
So.
But I also have phone calls saying that they don't wanna, they don't wanna have the realignment done on Andrews.
One person maybe, huh?
Well, I mean, there, no, there's more than one. Wanna keep it just the way it is, going right through the middle of Andrews.
So, a, again, I, I hear you, um, excuse me, Eric, um, I think, I wanna say, seems like I asked you basically what would it cost to reroute that, that section of road, um, and I think you gave me a figure of about a hundred thousand, is that correct?
Fifty, you know, and there probably, I mean, again, that, and there was probably some, you know, and again, that was a ballpark figure. Um, you know, there's some survey work that would have to be addressed, um, uh, probably some other issues. So, I mean, again, if you inflate the, you know, two hundred thousand, I, you know, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Probably to make it happen.
Are we gonna drop it, or are we still on the table? Yes, that's.
It's still on the table if we can find the funding to do it and, and achieve it, but I, I just, I don't have it next year.
Yeah.
I, I, there's, so we have, with this incident alone that we have going on here in Harney County, you know, the flooding, um, we may, we have almost a million dollars in our reserve, I think just a little less than, like, might be eight hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars in that reserve. Um, there's potential, depending on how this floats out. Now granted, we hopefully will get some funds from the state and that FEMA will pick up and, and whatnot. But there's real strong potential that we could exhaust our resources in this in- incident.
The people that create your budget, are they, uh, who is on your budget for the leaders?
I am, I am.
As I say, and, and the three of us.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
And it's very sad that when I got on the budget board, what we inherited in the, in the red, so that's all I'm gonna say.
No.
So I, that's why I try to, try to draw the importance to rebuilding our, our, um, our reserve, our general fund reserve. And, and even at best, um, I'm looking at, I, well, I'll be on, I mean, the budget, I'm gonna try and get it out today, so it'll be a public document today. Um, my goal was two hundred thousand dollars a year to go into our operating reserve. Because of what I had to cut, it's down to a hundred. I, I had to slash it in half, just to, just to get our budget to zero this year. And that's just the general fund budget. I mean, that doesn't include the road department budget, because there are different funds. Um, home health and hospice and, and public health and building department, they're all in their own funds. Um, this is just the general fund, and, and we have limited resources for that. Um, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't even begin to know where to dig up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now.
And that budget will be public information when it's released, and there is a public comment period in the process.
Yeah.
The meetings are open to the public, that's, and we'd love to have you.
My, I'm looking at this one, this has been done seventeen years ago, and now it has never been done, and I know it broke down, I'm hoping I can get back on track. As the previous officials, I don't think did a very good job. I have a fair lot of faith in you three, God, I hope it gets done.
Well, I, I hope we can live up to the faith that you have in us, because I, I hope we can live up to the faith that you have in us, because it's, it's, everybody's, we're all in it together. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Mine's visual. I brought pictures. So, because Debbie Arns.
For the record.
Because I'm on the budget board, I've been looking at your financial statements. So. Here. So your statement of net position is the very first document in here. I know you guys switched over to cash basis accounting.
And for the record, um, the document that Sarnes is looking at is our, our audit from twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thirty is twenty twenty-four ending date.
Yeah. Um, and it is a public document that's, uh, available in the clerk's office for public review, and I also think we have a co- a digital copy online.
That's also the Oregon audits division, all on its own. So this is your statement of net position. This is the statement of net position for Grant County and for Lake County. Now, which one of these do you think provides the most transparency to the public? And the most helpful information to the governing body?
And are you indicating or, or saying that the cash basis is the reason that our report looks like that?
No.
Okay.
I don't know why it's like that.
It's because we're broke.
Because.
She suggests this one, this one is more itemized and detailed, and that's just the format our auditors put it in.
But there's nothing here. So this Grant County is cash basis. And they're presenting their statement of net position on a ma- modified cash basis. Uh, Lake County is modified accrual basis, and theirs is on full accrual.
But really, all this audit is, is not, it's not an analysis of our financial position, it's an analysis of our process and our bookkeeping methods to make sure that there's no fraud.
No.
Use, right?
No. Audits are not intended to detect fraud. That's the first thing they say in their statement, in their audit report, is that's not the intention of an audit, is to find fraud. The purpose of the audit is to verify your financial amounts, to make sure that they're accurate. That is the purpose of the audit.
Are you, are you suggesting that we should talk to our auditor and ask for more detailed report?
Yes.
And is that the only area that you noticed so far?
So far.
Okay.
My concern about this is, for example, inventory is on this, on these. Inventory is not on this. Do you guys know what your inventory amount?
Inventory as far as asset management?
Yeah, do you know what your?
Our property, personal property?
Equipment, all that stuff?
Well, that's capital assets. Inventory is different. Inventory is all of your, it's at the road department, because I audited it when I worked for Osters. It's all the parts and tires and stuff at the road department, it's your fuel, et cetera, et cetera. So do you even know what the dollar value of that is, if it's not presented in your financial statements?
So you're referring to as if it were a, um, a retail, a retail business where they go through and have to count all their nuts and bolts and everything and.
Yeah, I see the treasures, uh, arriving.
So, but how does the public know? I mean, that's part of your financials, that's the whole reason that, that's.
So do those inventories, do they have a, an associated value assigned to them?
Not to my knowledge, um. But I will say, and I, I. I, I know that they are done, um, I know that we haven't had a problem with them, um. It's not in the audit, it may have been in the audit when Osters did, um, to my knowledge, our audit is, is presented, um, the way that it.
But so there's a difference between what is required and what you can do.
Correct.
Yeah, and that, that's my whole point.
Right, I'm just saying that what we present is required.
Yeah. But these guys are cash basis also, and they're taking it up a little notch. Grant County is, at least they're providing more useful information to the public.
You know, I, I would go ahead and, and volunteer to go ahead and take this and, uh, speak with our auditor about it, unless the treasurer would rather do it.
I'll let you take it.
Thank you, I'll be happy to look into that.
Okay, well, I, I looked at, I looked at Lake County, Grant County, Malheur, Crook, Deshues, Baker, Clamath Union counties, and then I looked at local ones, I looked at EST, School District Three, School District Four, One J, Burns and Hines. You and Malheur County are the only ones that have a statement of net position like this. And Malheur County has the same auditor that you have.
Which the auditor prepares this, not Harney County. So that's why their statement of net position probably is different.
Well, I don't know, hardly, hardly anybody prepar- prepares their own financial statements. In almost all cases, the auditor prepares them, but.
Well, then that's, that's, we've noted it, I think it's a discussion with our auditor to.
You and the auditor to get some answers, and then we can report back to the court.
Well, I just think for a lot of transparency, I mean, there, there's no information there for the public, none, except cash, that's it. And I think the public would wanna know more than that. I wanna know more.
I'm gonna reach out to you before I call the auditor, or maybe all three of us can be on a Zoom, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
By the way, Hines, City of Hines uses the same auditor that you do, and they have a full accrual net position.
I was gonna say, I know that, that our auditor serves other people here around here, and I would have to go back and look at their audits and see what their.
Yeah, well, that's like I say, I looked at all the low.
Yeah, well, that's like I say, I looked at all the local ones. And so it may be that we as county are not providing some of that detail for auditor to include it. And we'll find that out. I don't know.
It, it might be when they come to the county and they're here for a day or two to gather all that data. It's, maybe it's not on their checklist to ask for it, so we'll have to make sure that it is basically.
I would like to add that my office is open for the public to inquire about, about audit, about. Anything financial. Um, unfortunately, I rarely get a knock on my door. So if the door is open, if people want reservation, it's a bit difficult.
I actually intend to knock on your door later today or tomorrow when you're.
So I would like to get copies of your materials that you think I ought to have and then, well, when you and I sit down.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll make it soon.
All right.
I think it's important to note because I could understand how this would raise concern with community if they're present or if they watch. That this is an analysis of our financial status. And we had con- we just discussed about whether or not it is due to fraud, but it states right here that their objective. Is to determine if it's free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. That is the only basis of this. And I think that's important. For the public to understand. That if we don't have that. It's not saying that we're mismanaging our financials. I understand where you're coming. I, I agree that this is more informative.
Yeah.
But this report is not a statement of. W- whether we are liquid or not. It's a statement of our process and whether or not there are misstatements.
There's also a statement in there that says it's not their job to look at every transaction, so they may not find fraud. I mean, that they, they say that in.
Well, this is a transparency matter and I think we're all for that, so. I'll work with you on that and the auditor and get back to everybody.
Okay.
Good. Appreciate that.
How do you think this or are you taking it?
You take it and then.
Well, this is Bobby's copy. She gave this to me to look at, so.
I ha- I have a copy of it.
Okay. Which I thank you for.
And, um, I think, did I send you guys a digital copy of that? Of the audit?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, any other public comment in the room?
Spools.
Spools.
Somebody wanted to talk about squirrel.
Well, I was gonna ask online next. Um, so yes, there was.
Holly Higgins.
Holly Higgins, um.
Although due to the flood, she might be moving livestock right now.
Yeah, um, attendees. I don't see Ms. Higgins on virtually, but. I will, um, open it up to online. If anybody has any questions, you can come off mute or, um. Not seeing anybody come off, off of mute. I mean, no questions? One last call in the room?
Yeah, I just want to make a public comment, um, regarding, I know it's a issue you guys are gonna talk about later and that's building fees, but. I was, um, given some information and I know that it's out there in the community that's incorrect. And so I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware. There was speculation, a rumor that, um, the Crane Schools had spent. Eighty thousand dollars on the building permit for a twenty-five thousand dollar structure. And you know, when you hear that, of course, it raises eyebrows. So. I researched that and I just wanted to make sure people know that that is not accurate. That the current concession stand was actually one thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
For the permit?
For the permit, for the structural permit. It was three thousand one hundred fifty-six dollar permit for the egg building that they're doing now. So I don't know where that got started, but things like that are very detrimental.
Yeah.
To our county and to our community. And so I wanted to. Make sure that got.
Well, now you know where it started.
Yeah, well, and I do wanna, um, thank publicly, um, Mr. Stoffer. I did visit with him yesterday. Concerning the permitting process and have a lot better understanding of that. And, um. Again, when I first heard of how large the building permit was for the event center. You know, it, it's concerning, but I also understand the other side of that too, and maybe the process a little better. And I did call the International Code Council and ask them about their definitions of their codes and. Found out that they don't have definitions. They have it in their mind kind of what their guideline is, but that it's up to, I guess, whoever does the permit. To designate the code, the group code for a commercial building, so. Thank you.
You bet. It's very nice talking.
Thank you.
And one last call. Go ahead once. All right. You've had a couple alreadys. That's, go ahead, go ahead.
When they had the flood dam break or levy.
It did, so it, so people know that the dike did not break. It did not fail. The, 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 the structure, the earthen structure of it did not fail. Water got to a high enough point where it came over it. It kept coming over it. I think there might be still one section where it's coming over still. I don't, I haven't been out there this morning to see where they're at, but. But it didn't break and it didn't fail. It, it came over. Um, the other issue, the other. Levy or dike or whatever that we were speaking about on the reservation. That one didn't fail. It was made, a decision was made that they needed, they needed to cut it to release water. So, so there, nothing's failed yet anyway, I guess is what.
Okay, cause the cops came to my house, about twenty of them, and they started vacuuming. They told us that it failed. And it's gonna start rushing water. And if it does, there ain't nothing we can do to help you. So we suggest that you go to some sites that we got set up. So that way there you can spend the night or whatever.
Well, it, it failed, it failed because the volume of the water and the speed of the water. It, it failed because the speed of the water and the volume of the water overtook.
Overtopped.
I understand why you thought may have caught it.
Whatever the case is, they came my house and told us we had to leave. If they didn't leave, then they, nothing they can do for it. And they said that, uh, they got two areas set up. For where we can have you go for the night. My problem with that was. I've only been here, like I say, three years and I've been to the Fairgrounds. But at nighttime. It's so dark down there, you can't see. And the very first gate, they had clothes unlocked. I said, oh man. I said, they said it was open. So I turned around, came back to the police station and the police station's, oh no, they got people there. You just gotta look for it. It's a big red building. And there's no lights. And they had nobody out there directing. In case you have an emergency. And that to me is a big problem. Because if you have an emergency and there's nobody there to tell you where to go. Then you got problems.
Yeah.
And I thought that was a pretty bad failure.
So I will, I will communicate with the Red Cross. Cause the, the American Red Cross is manning the, uh, evacuation shelter site.
Right.
And I will communicate with them to make sure that their signage is, is adequate to.
That's all I'm saying.
You know, um.
Because they're.
Again, I don't maybe we could.
Big problem. And you had to stick everybody over there. Nobody, I'm sure a lot of people would know where to go, but I wouldn't.
Uh, I will, actually to help in that, I will check with the roadmaster and ODOT to see if they have any, uh, sandwich, you know, the, the, the. Cordon, the, whatever you wanna call them, uh, that have the flashing yellow lights on them, you know, like you see. Like you see in a construction area. If we can get a couple of those to put down there, so then at night it's flashing and people can see. So I, I will address that.
All they have to say, go toward the flashing red, yellow lights.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah.
Or red lights.
Yeah.
I thank you for your time and I wish you guys the best.
Thank you. Uh, all right, so, um. I've given that last call a couple of times, so I'm gonna move on. Um, so regular, regular agenda, next topic would be, um, agenda approval. Is there any additions to our agenda today? Additions or deletions?
Move to approve the agendas presented.
My second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve today's agenda for April first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Minutes approval. We have, uh, two sets of minutes from regular session on, uh, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five and a special emergency session. On, uh, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Um, the regular session obviously was, was just that regular session. The emergency session. Was about nine forty in the evening where we, um, amended our disaster declaration. Uh, as a result of the progression of the flooding event. And, and it's, uh, posted on, on YouTube and the minutes are online. So is there any? Any additions or changes or anything to those minutes? I'm just gonna do them both at once.
I move to approve the regular Harney County Court meeting minutes of March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five and the. Special emergency session of the Harney County Court of March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes from regular session on March nineteenth and special emergency session on March twenty eighth. Any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, opportunity for public comment. We've gone through that already, kind of out of order, but we've been there. Uh, old business. First topic under old business is the building fee schedule, um. Um, actually. The last one was for discussion. Uh, this one, I guess I should have mentioned would be for action. We need to make a, a decision on what we're gonna do there. Um, after the, after the last meeting and when we discussed that, I sent out an email to, uh, all county administrators in the state. Uh, so thirty-five other counties, of, of those thirty-five, I, I received eleven responses. To which all of those counties replied that they do not have any discounts or, or. Uh, reduced rates for internal projects. Whether it be within internally and within the county itself, projects or other city municipal or other, you know, tax funded agencies. So of those ele- of eleven, um. They all stated that there was no policy that they reduce fees. Um, and that's just a result of my, of my research and I would open it up for comment, but, uh. Commissioners.
I have a bunch. But it's mostly for just public consumption and my thought process. Uh, I, I type like stuff out when I'm thinking. So I can clean it up and it be orderly. And then I read it so I don't get off track. Cause I do that, but. Um, we, the county court, just as way of, of that, um. This topic was brought up and then we have received correspondence from the, um, the Fair Board Chair. And so I'm, I'm mainly kind of talking to that piece of correspondence and I think you'll be able to follow it, but. The Fair Board Chair wrote a letter to the county court on March twentieth regarding the current. Fee structure for our commercial building fees and, and asked for reconsideration of those fees because. Their fee is very large for the Ferrybent Center, um. And asking, but in a broader sense, asking for fees for any of the county properties or projects, schools and other special tax districts to be able to receive. Uh, reduced rate or discounts. He mentioned Harney County's unique challenges in economic growth and sustaining a healthy economy and how important it is. To help contractors stretch their budgets so more money can go into actual construction. And I do appreciate that letter and I do appreciate the conversation about it. But Harney County cannot afford to reconsider our commercial building fees for a bunch of reasons, but we, we can't afford to do that. The proposal to do that is not possible unless we want to shut down our commercial building services and have them revert back to the state. Harney County Building Department will not be able to sustain its commercial building services, which we've just been getting off the ground here in the last year. Year and a half. Um, if we make exceptions and reduce, discount or waive the industry fees. The Harney County fee schedule is the same as the state fee schedule. However, when the state provides the services, they retain ninety percent of those fees. And Harney, and now we will be able to recoup and build on those fees. For many years in Harney County, we were not licensed to perform commercial building services such as those permitting, plan approvals. Inspections, et cetera, to ensure the building's safety and compliance. We had to default to the state to provide that expertise and that work. Long delays took place at many junctures, sometimes each juncture because the state had a large workload and they didn't. Have a local presence here to provide that timely responsive service to our projects. And our contractors. Harney County's decision to invest in the vision and goal of creating and developing its own enterprise level building department. Will enable the provision of outstanding services, including. And very critically, providing that full range of commercial services to builders. This is a huge economic piece for our county and for the contractors. But it requires charging the industry standard fees to provide, build and sustain those services. And it will also then ultimately reduce and relieve our general fund. They have, they're in their own fund now within our funds, however, um. Will be relieved of, of all the things we contribute, including transfers and other things. The program is a sound fiscal strategy and it will fail if we make exceptions. To being paid in full for the services. We charge according to the state's own approved fee schedule. Now, some counties. Maybe not the eleven that responded to Judge Hart's inquiry. May have a lot of revenue and resources and they may be in a position to make exceptions or discounts at times, but Harney County is not in a position to do that. Maybe someday, but not, not, not in the near future. And, um. I'm not gonna go into the specifics. The Ferrybent Center is a very important thing. It's, it's a big project. It's. It, um. We all want it to succeed, but. I think the big shock happened was because. Um, the contractor mistakenly used an incorrect and lower fee when they were preparing their budget to make the bid. So a mistake happened, but. It, it's not the fault of the Harney County Building Department. The fees are industry standard. They're based on the calculated valuation basis. Using the process that's laid out in Rulin statute in Oregon and they are correct to the letter of the law. The Harney County Building Department did not raise its fees for this project and in fact, our building official did make a one-time concession. To discount the fee by ten percent, whether or not he should have. And I'm kind of glad you did, but you know, now we gotta figure out what we're really gonna do. So it's good to have this discussion now because our county finances could not be more dire. And this is before the flood happened, um, and Harney County needs to recoup all the legitimate fees and revenues, period. We need to do that. Um, Mr. Nair, the Fair Board Chair. He brought up his, his view that contractors won't be incentivized to build here in Harney County if we don't provide those kind of reductions or. Discounts or waive building fees. I'm sure they would love that if we would, but, um, I, that's. That could be something to debate for a long time and just suffice to say that, that I disagree with, with that as being a primary disincentive. As one of the three elected officials sitting up here. And I think personally, maybe all of us with a heavy heart sometimes because of our economic, financial. And capacity challenges, I can only say that it is unaffordable and undoable for Harney County to establish a policy or engage in categorical. Or case by case exceptions. Um, to waive or reduce our building fees. That will derail our county's ability to provide commercial building services. The state would then step back in and all the commercial projects in Harney County would still have to pay the same fee schedule. But would then additionally experience the long delays that come to state approvals. And I believe that would truly disincentivize commercial construction. I know some people in this room have experienced that. The county court is struggling to complete a balanced county budget here as we sit. Judge, judge accomplished it. I believe, but you know. It's been really hard. We've had to cut, cut, cut since the last discussion. We've imposed a one full-time equivalent employee reduction in county staff already. And in the future, there's likely to be more. So to be frank, the, the county can't afford to reduce, discount or waive these fees. It's the cost of doing business and we, we deserve and we need this revenue. And, and just another thought, by the way, county government is supposed to serve our entire county. This is, this is maybe me here talking, but to include both the government side and the private sector side. The businesses, the employees, the employers on that side too, as it should be. Not just the government side. Both. So I do not understand how discriminating financially against. Private sector compared to government projects can ever be a fair, equitable, honorable way to provide these services. It is. Discriminatory. I think same fees for same service. Discriminatory, I think same fees for same service. So since we can't afford to reduce or waive our bu- building fees beyond the one-time discount already given. Um. I believe it would be ir- irresponsible to further weaken Harney County's fragile and declining revenue outlook by implementing. This proposal for policies uh, that would make exceptions. I find it to be an optional, unaffordable and discriminatory policy for our. Commercial building fees. I I feel kind of strongly about it. I'm just one vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I can't dispute the validity of the fees. I appreciate that the building department has updated them and they are in line with state statute. I don't believe that we should use. Tax dollars. To. To pay the fees. For projects from entities that are funded by Harney County tax dollars. To me, as a citizen, I feel like if we get, for example, four million dollars worth of tax dollars to put in an event center. I would like to see four million dollars worth of build, not three point eight million dollars. Worth of build. I don't agree that the county can't afford it because whether we spend the extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars on fees. Or whether we have to spend it later to fill that extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of build. It's still money coming from the Harney County taxpayers. I don't think. Whether it is for county projects or a jail project that is upcoming or a proposed school bond for school district three. I don't think that we should lessen the amount, the distance those dollars can go on a build. By paying it for fees. I feel like the county court has made a strong commitment to maintaining a rigorous building department. And I know in this upcoming budget, I think there's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of budgeted revenue. Is that correct? Which doesn't include. Fees from the Harney County Fair Event Center. Or the jail project or any potential school projects. So I I don't think that it is gonna undermine our building department. I realize the importance of having a strong building department. I believe by and large, we should not charge fees to our own county. The Fairgrounds is not gonna send us a bill for the rent that's going on right now for using it as an evacuation center. Not just because it's an emergency, but because they're a Harney County entity and they're not gonna charge the county. Our county weed department. Doesn't charge the county when they spray our county weeds and I. I feel strongly, I'd like to see those tax dollars go further without compromising the integrity of our building department. And with that, I would make a motion if unless you want to discuss it before a motion.
Uh, uh. Well. I I just had a couple of quick follow-up things that I want to clarify and make sure everybody understands. That the fees derived by the by the building department must stay within the building department program. Um, with our talk earlier of of uh, uh, general fund revenue woes, this is not about. Taking money. In the general or in the building department and bringing it to the general fund. They have to stay there. So so this is not about. You know, charging in one area to take to another. Um, another, another point, um. In that is that by them being able to raise their own revenues. Generate their own revenues. Um. They have become self-sufficient, wherein in years past in history. The building department has received a transfer from the general fund. In this year's budget, that transfer is zeroed out. So they're they're self-sufficient and they won't need um, that transfer and there'll be less, less pressure, less burden, whatever you wanna call it. On the general fund. So so those were goals that we had too when we first started to to build the ju- uh, building plan. The building department. It's been a long week. Um. So I just wanted to make make those two points that that these um, is towards our goal. Um, of making that department self-sufficient and not dependent on general fund dollars and that those dollars can't come to the general fund. So with those, those two.
And I would like to make another comment is that. When a the building depo- county building department is successful and has built its reserve. So that it can weather the ups and downs of the market. And the work without laying people off, without letting some of your certifications go, but the things that would degrade. The capacity. Uh, it's after, it's the counties that I have spoken to other counties when they're building uh. Department and in many cases, they've been successful and have a reserve for many, have already had it for many years. Then they're more, their governing body is more apt to decide if they want to change a policy in the direction that um. Commissioner Frank has mentioned, but there's no guarantees on that about whatever our our budget for next year looks like and what we're expecting. So.
Can I throw something in?
Uh, yeah, sure. Before we get, before we get to a motion.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that when it, when it comes to talking about. The funds that we have as an example of Jackson County, when Jackson County had a big fire in the greenway and they lost thousands of homes. Um, they were able to do no fees for an emergency victims in those situations and. And it was because they had built their department up to a point where they had the reserve funds and they had all the things and they could respond. To an emergency within the community, just like you're talking with the amount of money that the county is gonna have to additionally spend. Those are the things that we can help out with is because we can provide homeowners. With some some funding or or maybe maybe it is a free permits to deal with the HVAC system and the electrical and. Those type of things to help out in these emergencies. So. I I just wanted to add that that it's not just about keeping that building department afloat. It's about the administration of it. The 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 safety of the employees and the training, but also. Uh, how we are able to interact as a community in times like we're having right now. That's it.
I I believe that private industry and government. In terms of running a business are on kind of different levels and different standards. The goal of private industry is to grow and the goal of government is to serve. And so I would move that Harney County waive all fees for any entities funded by Harney County tax dollars, including but not limited to county departments. Schools and special districts.
Look, your motion? That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Um. I will second that motion. Any further discussion? So a motion has been made to, what was it, to discount or to?
To waive all fees for any entities funded by Harney County tax dollars, including but not limited to county departments, schools or special districts.
As read. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails.
May I say? That I can live with that because I respect the court and I respect the building department. And I appreciate the comments Mr. Stalfer said about in times of emergency and I hope that these fees. Will be helpful with that, so.
I'm trying.
Thank you.
Thank you for the process.
Yes, and and I will say, um. While my vote was a nay, I seconded it because I felt it was necessary to go all the way to that vote.
And again, you know, um, now, so now that's off the table for now. Let's just proceed and let's help.
Yep.
At times of emergency.
Thank you for your vote and confidence. And I appreciate and my my phone is always on for anybody in the community that wants to talk about any of this stuff, how our processes work. And.
And and I.
Always there.
I appreciate Mr. Nair writing the letter. I appreciate Commissioner Frank's different point of view from mine very much. And we try to represent.
Do we need to address or discuss the potential for how we are gonna handle the? The catastrophic losses and the rebuilding? Do we need a? A county policy for how we will handle that with fees? What do you think?
So I've been in contact with uh, Mount here county who had a flood. I don't know what it means, probably more stream years I would imagine. Um, I'm gonna put a bunch of information out and uh, I need to gather more understanding of what. Exactly is out there, kind of like the fire that we had last, last summer. We didn't, we needed to take a little bit of time to see. Kind of what the the demand was gonna be. Um, and I, I think that we can talk about that. In a week or two, I think we might have a better understanding from our perspective. Through you guys, what what the needs are gonna be.
And I'm also gonna suggest, I was gonna wait till general deliberations that we set up a Zoom call with uh, our. Colleague commissioners in Jackson, Douglas, maybe Clamath, whatever. Who's available and they can give us their lessons learned on a lot of stuff about the recovery to and then the building part, we can have some extra. Work session, but I think we're gonna need a couple of work sessions on on learning.
If you get some information, you'd like me to follow up or have conversations. I know all those building officials can talk. I can gather information. I, a little bit of direction would be helpful for as we move along, um. What what your needs are.
So I I would then ask on that note that maybe. Just some, uh. How others have, how other counties have have addressed that as far as, and I. I I wanna say it seems like I've heard of other counties when they've had issue incidents like this. Where they relieve those building funds either entirely or partially for a period of time. And 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 I would think then that we would address that maybe through resolution. Of the court to to say from this time to this time. Um, and and we could even extend it if it turned out to be not long enough, but. But kind of to see how other counties maybe have have addressed that type of a situation.
And and the the timeframe is probably the most important part. I think you have a short timeframe and you can extend out. Grant County, when they have the. Uh, canyon fire. They kind of did an open-ended for the homes that were destroyed in there and so they actually had to go in just. In the last few months and stop because they realized they had an open-ended process and property should sold to different people and. Um, so they they actually finally came in and stopped that, so. I will definitely do some work on that. Um, I'm gonna get some information out of what I have. To disseminate to uh, our emergency manager and then anything that comes up. Or anybody in the community that has questions, feel free to call me. Do what I can do, so.
Anything else on that topic? Alright.
Are you done with me?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Next, uh, new business. Uh, we have four IGAs or three IGAs and a. And a resolution.
So the IGAs are all one topic. The resolution is something else.
Yeah. Um, so. Three IGAs. I thought we had four documents to find.
The one that you sent me was a second copy of the Baker.
One of those ones, you're okay. Okay, so um, I am going to defer to Commissioner Doro because you took the lead on this and um. What the IGs, what the IGAs are and what they mean and.
Well, I will immediately defer to um, our environmental health specialist, um, Jesse Barnes, who has also been helping out. Of course, here on the floods and stuff, but our. Our um, environmental health services is expanding. We've already taken on some other counties and now three additional counties. Um, Willawa, Union and Baker. Uh, what happened is the state, um. DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, had a person who was covering that northeastern region retire and they're not replacing them. And this is for all onsite septic approvals and all this kind of stuff. And you know, whenever. You can't get these things done in a timely fashion, it slows and stops construction. Sometimes projects don't end up getting done. Definitely loss of money and time. And so we have like the star individual in the state. Here who is just really uh, grown our program and I I get nothing but good comments. And so. At a commissioner level, I've made contact with with those counties, but Jesse Barnes has done all the work and it. Uh, she's gonna brief us briefly on the administrative matters it takes. For us to do that and and we'll be hiring another person who will be out of La Grand. Who will be servicing those, but she will be the supervisor and these positions take a bachelor's degree, studies in soil science. It's a very qualified. Um, position and it's a very essential position. So Jesse.
Um, thank you, Patty. Um, I can say that this has been, it's been quite the process. Started it about November with putting feelers out. Going through the conversations and the process. Um, working with DEQ and um, as well as the planning directors for each Baker, Union and Willawa counties. Meeting with their board commissioners and work sessions or individually as we can. Um, one of the first steps um, in the process is the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement. And a, the IGA is between DEQ at the state level, our county. And each individual county, that's why there's three. Um, the in that IGA, this is different than our uh, current agreements with. Grant County and Wheeler County. In that those also tied in MOU, so they're a little different. Um, hopefully. This IGA was drafted by the Department of Justice with the state, so it's supposed to take place of all that and be a simpler, more easy forward format. Um, the IGA essentially states that. Each respective jurisdiction with Baker, Union and Willawa will go through the steps of having. A onsite wastewater ordinance, a mechanism in which to enforce said ordinance. And they will adopt a fee schedule. And in return, Harney County agrees to provide onsite services. Which means we will have the qualified personnel with their correct licensing and education background. And we will provide them with the materials to successfully complete the onsite services. Um, the state will continue to do all onsite requirements for the commercial aspect. So anything larger than twenty-five hundred gallons per day or anything that exceeds um, nutrient levels in the affluent. They would put it into a commercial uh, permitting requirements. Um, and they will also continue to provide um, professional expertise and guidance on any concerns we have. And will assist with any enforcement issues. If things need to go that far. Um, Harney County will act as our our onsite individual, myself included and the individual that will be in northeast Oregon. Will act on behalf of those jurisdictions as far as any enforcement that occurs in that we will do all the late work. We will do the, the investigation, we will keep the notes, we will take the photos. And work with each individual jurisdictions, uh, county court, their planning director and their, um. Go through their legal requirements in order to proceed with any enforcement issues. So it's not our rules being imposed on them or their rules being imposed on us. So it's very similar in how it currently operates. With um, Harney, Grant and Wheeler.
Well, it's it's, you've jumped on it. They've all are grateful that Harney County is gonna be able to offer a solution. Cause the state was just saying, discuss amongst yourselves as a Roseanne, Roseanne.
Um, one of the things that's kind of made this more of a challenge is that. Um, the state wants to hand off all three jurisdictions at once. And that mainly ties back to their procurement as well as their uh, record keeping system. So we get all that information all at once. Um, which has been kind of a frustration and but yet at the same time, I understand where they're coming from. And we just had to go through the process. Um, the other side of. That process is each county has to go through their own ordinance process. And adopt those ordinances and if you're a jurisdiction. Um, similar to what we currently operate in where you don't have. An enforcement policy. That's a whole blank slate and people go, oh, we have an enforcement policy. Everyone's like, oh my gosh, no. What are you talking about? So that, um. There's a lot of education that comes along with that. Um, I've met in person with Baker County. I have another meeting with their attorney and their planning director tomorrow. To answer and address concerns with their ordinances. Um, Union County is, I believe, April twenty-seventh, I'll be up there in La Creole. I forgot it on my calendar. And I will be meeting with them, answering questions and concerns. I believe they're ready. Are pretty close to being ready to adopt everything, so be ready to go. And same thing with the Lauer County. I'm hoping to. Go do um, some in-person contact with them when I'm up there in La Grand.
Are you feeling really strong about it? Do you feel there's any, anything you need help with?
Uh, this time, no. Um, I think just me remaining uh, or keeping that bridge of communication open with commissioners. Letting them know that we are here with information if they would would like it and keeping that, that open was fantastic.
And now with your. Being so busy with the flood support. Um, do you see the timeline shifting?
Yeah.
Um. Okay.
Um, it is proposed uh, in the IGAs, June first is the start date. That should give everybody with Baker, Union and Willawa enough time to get their ordinances through the process. As well as adopted fee schedule. Um, so we can provide service. That also gives us enough time to get that individual located in La Grand and up to speed on what's going on. And get them the materials they need, including a vehicle to do everything that they need to do.
Is, is it? Likely that they will all be adopting? Our fee schedule and is our?
Our fee schedule and is our fee schedule, the state fee schedule?
Our fee schedule is what is proposed if they adopt, um that fee schedule is the state fee schedule, so. Um, right now, Harney, Grant and Wheeler, we all have the same fees. And it is proposed that Baker, Union and Willawa also have that same fee schedule and will just stay with the state because. Yes, I would like to say that we can provide service cheaper, which in Harney County, maybe that is true. Except for the fact that this is a a fee based program and we have to be able to pay the individual, we have to be able to buy tires. We have to be able to provide that service. And part of that fee schedule also includes the state surcharge. So we pay the state their surcharge fee, which those fees go back into. Um, paying for Acela, which is the state funded uh record keeping system. That goes to um pay for the state expertise and legislation and whatever they do with those fees.
Did you carefully review these IGAs?
Yes, I did not see any issues, uh Dominic also reviewed them, uh county council, he saw no issues with them. All three jurisdictions, Baker, Union and Willawa have also reviewed them and had no issues with the IGAs.
Very good, any questions?
Yeah, and and I was gonna be one of my questions about legal review that's been done, I see the appropriate normal elements in it, termination and and indemnification clauses. Uh, one thing I don't see and and maybe it's the.
Looked like a ten year, ten year IGA expires in twenty thirty five.
It uh references Exhibit A, Statement of Work, Exhibit B, DEQ. Uh, Surcharge Report and Exhibit C, Subcontractor Insurance, I don't see the DEQ Surcharge Report.
So the Surcharge Report will not be issued until June first and essentially the Surcharge Report. That's what we will provide them, um that we do month on a month basis anyhow, so that's just part of operations. That we currently do with Harney, Baker and uh Wheeler Counties. Um, that's, it's a a report that we generate. Um, on June first, when we officially take over as the service provider for these three jurisdictions. This state will be providing us with the balance owed for work not completed on each open permit in all three jurisdictions. And that will come directly to Harney County.
Okay.
Rest of them short.
Um, I also wanted to point out again too, because you know, we talk about the. Revenue shortfalls and and general fund shortfalls and everything that this like like the building department, the environmental health department. Those funds have to stay within that program, so again, this is not a. Not a a revenue grab by the general fund in any way, shape or form, they have to stay within that department. To be self sufficient and and while we did do a supplemental budget initially this year. In order to move some funds over to be able to hire somebody and to buy, to buy a uh. Uh vehicle and whatever, computer, whatever was needed for that person to be able to work. Uh, it's not anticipated that this program will receive general funds in the next budget.
Correct, and it isn't, we will be able to uh return those uh borrowed dollars from the supplemental budget. By the end of next week.
Just back to the jump to us.
It'll be returned, so it was a good borrow.
Yeah, it was a loan.
It was a loan and um while yes, this is not a grab, um we will be. Uh, we pay the administrative fees for expenses, that goes back into the county general. So.
So and as background for that, all non general fund departments pay an administrative fee for accounting and personnel, et cetera, so. Uh, and another and another lift that that both the building department and and the environmental health services department. Um, in the past, their vehicles, their fuel, all of that was was paid through general fund, again, these departments will become self. Self sufficient where those um doll, general fund dollars won't be needed anymore in those departments.
Good.
Invoice payments will be sent to the state of Oregon, not to Harney County, so how do we?
So as far as the invoice payments um being sent here. I'm.
Yeah, I was I was just curious because it's an intergovernmental agreement between us and these other three counties, and so I was. Curious why the payments aren't sent to Harney County instead of the state of Oregon, or maybe that's how all the E Q payments go to the state of Oregon.
So we will be collecting all the fees, I believe the invoice payments, that's more specific to the state surcharge. We, so we will be collecting very um, as we do now with Harney, Grant and Wheeler, we collect. All the permit fees to our office. Once we get the fees, we take off, um I think it's a hundred and seventeen dollars right down. For the state surcharge and monthly we remit those payments back to the state. So that's the surcharge report and that's the invoice we'd be sending to the state.
And then on travel and travel related expenses and some of the other items. It just says reserved and I just wanted to confirm that that wasn't a placeholder for language to go in later and I wasn't sure what the legal ease of reserved.
Um, the way I understand it, when I look through it, um is that all the items in there that are reserved are on. The environmental health department to pick up those bills or to set that required. So as we, the permits are what is, the permit fees are what is paying for the operation of providing the service. So it'll be on our mind of the environmental health department to pay for those and use the fees accordingly responsibly.
I don't have anything further.
Thank you, that's a big lift and thank you Patty for being the liaison to help, that's a big deal.
I'm excited.
Kind of, just kind of.
No, it's really exciting, um I think it's a good thing, um. I know this is stated often, but there's a lot more to Oregon than the west side of the state. We don't all have trees, we don't all set fisher, we don't have yard most of the time. Um, and sometimes I think we get a little bit forgotten in the grand scheme of things and. If we're able to provide this local service for our neighbors, I think that's fantastic. Um, it builds communication, it builds um friendships and relationships and it kind of brings. At least in my experience, it brings the community closer to the government and the government closer to the community from a local standpoint. And that's really needed in a lot of areas.
So the IGAs have signatures for um Harney County Administrator. Uh Baker, well, each one of them respectfully Baker, Willawa, Union. Um, and then an agreed by uh DEQ signature, so um. I would ask for a motion to allow me to sign as the county administrator on behalf of the county.
I move to authorize Judge Hart to sign on behalf of Harney County, these three IGAs as discussed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to um authorize myself as the county administrator to sign on behalf of the county court. Any further discussion?
I just, uh, so after they're signed, um Jesse, you're you're probably ask. Or Judge Hart, Les Holly to get it back to those counties for their action.
Correct, so once you guys sign, I can take the original document to each jurisdiction, so they can sign at their next county court. And then I will facilitate getting them back to uh Corby Ewan, who is. Um, assisting with getting everything where it needs to go, so the state can give it signed and then an official copy will be sent back. Once all signatures have been read on signature.
Now, I would say um however, the other counties and the DEQ wants to deal with that, but traditionally. Um, just scanned email copies are fine to sign, it doesn't have to be an original signature on all three of them.
Okay.
And you know, so you don't have to curry them all the way to the locations. Um, if if there's, if the other jurisdictions are fine with that, then just scan them and send them off, let them sign them. Forward it on to DEQ and we'll be done with it.
Okay, I'll work.
And then just, and then and then in in turn, make sure that every, every individual, every party. Has a copy of the completed executed, so we can archive it.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
So did we vote?
Oh, did we, didn't we, um?
I don't think we did, I don't know.
The motion's been made and seconded to authorize me to sign on behalf of the county court, um any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, and hearing none, motion carries.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, moving on, you've got things to do.
I'm off to take water samples and get them to the courier to get them unpacked. Um, if you guys would like updates, let me know, I'm assisting Melinda, our emergency manager with.
Everything.
Communications and kind of uh things that have been going on throughout the day, so if you guys have questions.
Thank you, so much.
Give me one more minute, I'll sign these and then you can take them, okay?
Do you want the insurance journal number? Yes, I believe those, I can touch back with you later today if that. Thank you, thanks, thank you.
Jesse? Did you want these?
Um, I was gonna leave them on Holly for commissioner journal numbers.
Okay.
Give them from her later this afternoon.
Okay, so I'm I'm done with that one, I'll just sign the other two of it.
But I just wanna thank county court with all your guys' efforts and I hope you guys to be acknowledged for all of your endeavors with the flooding. I think that needs to be, it's been fantastic.
And yours as well, cause you're involved in, you are involved in the response of the flooding, so your department, and thank you.
So thank you guys.
Um, next item under new business is Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven, General Fund Appropriations. So with the, or said flooding. In issue that we're dealing with, I asked the treasurer to prepare a resolution to move. Um, or to move and appropriate and different category um are um. Come on, pull it out, um contingency funds that we had left in the contingency fund line. And um a hundred thousand dollars of our um budgeted. General fund transfer to the to the operating reserve, again, in this budget, I had two hundred thousand dollars uh. Budgeted for that transfer to go into the operating reserve, we need to um. Make some funds available to pay bills until we, you know, maybe are reversed or get some other funds. Um, go ahead.
I went back and I just heard you, but I may have misunderstood you because I appropriated the general trades fund. So do I.
The full two hundred?
Two sixty three.
Okay, that that's fine, we'll just leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, originally I was only intended on on a hundred thousand, but this will be good, really, no.
Cause I could correct it.
No, we we spend what we need, what we don't spend will roll back into it, so that's fine. Thank you. Okay, so uh Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven in the matter of intra-fund transfer of appropriations within categories. For General Fund one zero one. This being the first day of April twenty twenty five and a day set aside for regular meeting of Harney County Court. And there being President William Hart, County Judge, Patty Doro, County Commissioner and Rob Frank, County Commissioner, and whereas. ORS two ninety four point four six three allows transfers within a given fund between appropriated categories. And whereas such transfer must be authorized by Resolution of the Harney County Court. And whereas Harney County has experienced extreme flooding and Governor Kotek has declared a state of emergency for Harney County. And whereas the Harney County Court has deemed an emerg, an emergency need to appropriate. Contingency funds and said funds shall be used for flood relief costs. And whereas the Harney County Court has also deemed it necessary to transfer appropriation of the General Fund Operating. Reserve Transfer for Flood Relief Costs and therefore requires the following changes in the appropriation to follow. To follow to Oregon Budget Law and now therefore be it resolved that the following category appropriations be adjusted as follows. General Fund one zero one, Materials and Supplies uh increased. By two hundred sixty three thousand, six hundred and eighty three dollars. Which results in a decrease uh in from the intra-fund transfer of two hundred thousand dollars. And the contingency line uh decrease of sixty three thousand, six hundred and eighty three dollars. As previously mentioned, a total of two hundred sixty three thousand, six hundred and eighty three dollars.
Is that the way you wanted on the the numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
Then I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven in the matter of intra-fund transfer of appropriations. Within categories for General Fund one zero one as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven in the matter of. Intra-fund transfer of appropriations within categories for General Fund one zero one as read, are any further discussion?
Think it will be important when trying to procure state and federal funding that we show that we have expended everything we have to give, so I think that's good that. Doing the full.
That's another element of it as well, yes, um. Yes, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, and hearing none, motion carries. And that brings us to correspondence. Uh, some routine correspondence from Bureau of Land Management. Burns District Office has prepared the Alkali, Winter and East Wagon Tire Water Development Environmental Assessment. Big documents, there, the letter with links to those documents is is in the um. The agenda package, it's there for the public to review, I just always like to give this stuff the widest dissemination as possible and make it available for the public. The other correspondence item was previously mentioned, um Harney County Fair Board Chair. Chair, President?
Chair.
Chair. Um, Craig Neer and his letter to the county court in regards to the topic we previously discussed about the bu, uh the building fees. And that's all I have for correspondence unless anybody would like to add anything else. Hearing anything there, we'll move on to uh scheduled meetings. Um, I'm gonna jump to just regular court meetings, this again to reiterate that this month, we have uh moved this one, obviously today, uh Tuesday, which is outside of our normal. Our normal uh meeting schedule of the first and third Wednesday of the month. This, this month, we are the first and third Tuesday of the month due to conflicts. Uh, and I think some of those conflicts may have cleared up, but since we've already advertised it, I'm gonna say we stay with today and the fifteenth.
Well, actually, I'm glad you said that because. What got canceled for tomorrow, the division or postponed, the Division five twelve RAC meeting has now been moved to what would have normally been this, you know, our county court meeting, so it's we've already changed it.
So we're still good to go for the first and the fifteenth today, and I mean, we're here today.
Yeah.
So, all right, that's all I have for for meetings, um. Anything else, any other no of note?
Just reminder that the April eighth is the first budget board meeting and that'll start at nine and it's scheduled for all day till four. And uh, so public, if they wanna come, they can. I I'm finished, Rob.
Between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting, there's a regularly scheduled Fair Board Meeting on Monday, the seventh. At least it's scheduled. And the Ways and Means Roadshow is meeting several places across Oregon and they'll be in La Grand on Friday, the eleventh. And I I plan to attend that in person to advocate for policies that should or shouldn't be funded in the best interest of our county.
Great.
Um, looking through my calendar, is the airport committee meeting since we have?
Of course.
In that, did still have a council member here, is it, do you know if that's gonna stay or is it monthly or is it qua?
Well, it sounds like you know, um, yeah, Council Heather Smith is on it, but it's still monthly as far as I'm aware. Another lot of things going on.
Okay. And that's uh, yeah, just making sure that had, if I couldn't. It's in my calendar, but I didn't know if it was a monthly or ever, every other month.
For one day.
Uh, April fourteenth.
Bird Festival starts in the eleven, huh, is that right?
Yes, uh tenth, eleventh, something like that. Yes, uh tenth, eleventh, something like that. Um, RFPA Summit is April sixteenth and seventeenth. I mentioned that at the last meeting. Um, I'm able to attend that and I will. It's here in Burns.
So I don't have anything else myself between now and the fifteenth. General deliberation. I think we need to um some concern has come up on our social media policy within the county. Um, and while this would be at this point, because it's just under general deliberation, this would be for discussion only, no action at this time. There was we use our social media as a form of information, as a form of just getting it out to the public and um and informing the public. There is has been some concern about the uh posts that were that were forwarded or shared on Facebook that uh from legislative action. I think it was relating to uh weapons, guns, lu- uh legislation. Um, the county did not did not specifically make really a, you know, for or against, I don't believe. Did we? No. And um but there was some concern about the that looking as if it was an endorsement by the county. I guess we probably need to decide, are we gonna continue with sharing that kind of information or are we gonna refrain from?
I would share information. I think turning off the comments might be a easy solution so that there's not a back and forth rhetoric on there and we can still share information. I think that'd be a good idea.
Well, that's what I was thinking um. But I haven't really spent much time thinking about it. I just thought I don't see a problem with posting. There's hearing on this for anyone interested, but if that seems like the choice of which ones we post. I mean, that's where I think it really lies is if it's posted on the county Facebook page. Does that imply something or not? To me, it's information. It's information. I I get most of my legislative um reminders about things from Katie Bowser in her emails, um which are awesome, but I don't know. I mean, I I don't know. I'm okay with keeping them if we turn off the comments.
So let's uh again, it's just general deliberation. We we're not really, it's not an agenda item for action. So the the question is there. Think about it.
Okay.
And we'll come back. We'll come back maybe with uh if we need to specifically address it with a motion and a policy. We'll come back with it at a later point. Okay. Any other general deliberation items?
I always have some. Um just like to, you know, appreciate Commissioner Frank's representation on the Division five twelve Rules Advisory Committee and I know he recently testified in Salem for House Bill thirty-eight hundred, as did several Harney County people, uh water bill. But anyway, is there when it's your turn, if you if there's anything you you think is new or we ought to know about um? Let's see, I guess Judge Hart answered my question on budget update. It is your intent to try to get that out and posted today? Is that correct?
I I obviously with everything that's been going on, I wanted to have it out a day or two sooner, but today is exactly one week from our first budget meeting, so I wanted to have it out to the budget committee at least a week prior, so that they had a chance to review it. Um, which is, hey, I'm ahead of schedule from last year, because I think it was right up to the day before last year.
Um, Commissioner Frank on you know, I became aware that the um Fair Board has a, you know, a building committee that's focused on the Ferryman Center and is and that's something that you or you do attend those or you engage in those, or do you think the county needs to just have somebody there or not? I mean, it's their right to invite who they want on forming their committee, but I just.
I think it'd be worth asking about. The only time I've engaged with them was they when they had a special meeting to decide how to proceed about the building fees was the only time I engaged with that actual committee, but I will ask.
I mean, you've got a lot of meetings, I know that. I just if if they think it would be helpful to have you as a liaison available and if you're willing, you know, whatever. Um, but things are pretty far along, but I know that will always be something. You know, on a building construction budget. Just a thought. And then um reminder, do our uh statement of economic interest filings. We're all required to do that.
Done.
Done. Um and then I just wanna throw out as we as we be thinking about economic development, I know that we're we're planning to uh reevaluate our direction for that in future and the fairly near future. And when I hear all this stuff, I think we need a professional grant writer who can write anything from a congressionally directed, you know, request to things that pop up, someone who can can put it together and help our community and you know, if that because we we're gonna need outside money, we're not gonna be able to thrive with just what we have coming in on our property taxes, et cetera. And there's grants out there, uh I think, but and a lot of people write grants that contributed to writing a grant, whatever, but some people I don't know who they are yet, but I think there's entities where we could we could have them, you know, it's some kind of retainer and get, you know, include the cities and other other entities, you know, let's get some grants. Now, let's start competing for for some really important grants.
Some, they're all different. Some grants are fill out an application. There's not a whole lot of wordsmithing to it and some of them. Yeah, and some of them can be very detailed and technical in nature.
Yeah, but we we can't do it in-house. We're all maxed out.
Think when we explore which direction we wanna take our economic development for the county, that's something we definitely need to discuss and the timing of that is kind of sensitive because our current economic development is in a legislative session trying to procure funding for our jail project, and so I'm not sure what the best timing for that discussion is, but I think that would be an opportunity.
Well, I just throw it out so we can all be thinking about it in the public who listens to these meetings can think about it and give us their input as well, but yeah, I mean.
I've thought about it and I have my, when we get to that conversation, I have my my proposals on it, so.
Well. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
The the last Zoom meeting that I attended about homelessness and about the Community in Action Group in Malheur County that also services Harney County. I had some questions about what it actually looks like in Harney County with the boots on the ground. The guy that facilitates those meetings, for example, I think is out of Texas. Malheur County isn't here and I reached out to the Burns Police Chief just because from his body language, I thought he might be interesting to talk to. We had a robust conversation about homelessness. One of the things that he talked about was the forecl- the reason we don't see it as much in Harney County as much is is here is because there are so many foreclosed upon properties that people are just squatting in and many of those properties are owned by the county. To my knowledge, the county doesn't have a department where a person that we can say, go close up and secure those buildings. We we have one maintenance guy. Um, so we don't really have the the resources to secure those buildings and because of the limbo that our ability to get rid of foreclosed properties is in at a state level right now. Uh, I'm not sure how we need to address that, but that is one of the things that is an issue with homelessness. And then.
Did he say that's happening here in Harney County?
He said he could drive me around and show me.
In county property.
Yeah.
Cause I haven't heard any of those.
Yeah, he.
I mean, I can think of three properties that we own that I would say were probably subject to that, but I have not heard any any communication on that that we have issues with that on our properties.
Well, and and he said he he's not sure how to broach it because they're not going to cite the county. They realize we don't have the resources to close them up. But I guess this is our heads up now, but it's good to know that because he did say that's why you don't see encampments, tent camps is because there are so many foreclosed upon vacant properties and people are just squatting and that the police force knows where they are, and so it's an issue we probably need to address. Community in Action happened to come over that same day and got ahold of me. And they have seventy-five thousand dollars and it's earmarked for Harney County that has to be spent by June. And they talked about the different things it could be used for, including warming shelters. And I expressed to them that we don't want, if you build it, they will come. And so I reached out again to the police chief and the sheriff and they said, we have to do training every year. We could use those funds for that training. And we also put together gas vouchers and supply bags. I was unaware. But oftentimes when people are situationally unhoused in our county, it's because they're passing through and they break down or run out of gas. And so i- if we could use those funds to have gas vouchers to keep people moving to where they're trying to get to, it would cut down on it a lot. And so I replied to Community in Action, said that's what they said they could use it for, and they said we'll meet soon, so.
Why don't we consider asking them and writing a formal letter that we we are in a state of emergency uh and we will have much homelessness issues. And that we request the whole seventy-five thousand dollars. We will be using it for the following things and, you know, basically trust us. Give us the money, because we will use it correctly.
Yeah, that conversation came up before the flood. That's a good point.
Yeah, that right now, I mean we can sit there and and the things you mentioned are fine, but now we've got homelessness um issues coming up that are of a different nature and more what, you know, more what they do, so. Would you uh have that touch base and then we can generate?
Yeah, they said they're gonna come over maybe next week and try to get together and I'll definitely bring that up and see if we need a formal letter to request that or what they've got. I went to Beerman's new meat processing facility open house yesterday. Man, I bet there were over sixty people there. They'll be able to process local meats. And because they will be ODA compliant and approved, those ranchers will be able to sell their products in grocery stores, in restaurants. They can donate them to the hub. They can donate them to schools and so and they already have a full workforce. They've already got everyone employed. And sadly enough, they they should be up and running hopefully by the middle of April and they did lose Beermans in the flood, the other Beermans um in the flood, so that timing will be advantageous for them. OWRD Commissioner Doro already talked about, but I appreciate it. They reached out yesterday and said, should we postpone this meeting that's scheduled for tomorrow? And I thought that would probably be appropriate because even if people weren't directly affected by floods, neighbors are helping neighbors. And it's it's just not a very tasteful time to talk about water shortages, really. So I appreciate that. That bill thirty-eight hundred, the Representative Owens has. I did go test spy on it. It's not a silver bullet, but there's a lot of misunderstanding in our community about it. People are frustrated because they don't want the Department of Water Resources affecting our economy and dictating what we do, but that bill is trying to put some sideboards and some guidelines on what their authority is. For example, one of the things it demands is that they shut off illegal use of water. And first and foremost, which should be a no-brainer before we even start talking about curtailing active water users. Maybe let's figure out what water users we have, shut down the illegal use. And so they are working on an amendment to that bill that is gonna fine tune it and make it hopefully an even better tool for Harney County. And I've been talking about, we we have talked about strategic planning for the last couple of months and trying to get a pro bono group to come in and do it because our our county as an organization needs to do some strategic planning, but we're not in position to pay for it. And I have been working with the Extension Agency to see if they would do it. And finally, I reached out this morning and the gentleman who I had been working with was the interim provost for Extension and he is a week ago was appointed as their full-time provost and he said, we're working on a document. We'll have a docu-sign document that'll be a no expense to you soon, so. That's still, that's
Excellent.
All the blah.
I've been pretty consumed with budget the last couple of weeks and then now the flooding, so I don't really have any other things outside of that to brief. I do wanna mention though, on the foreclosed properties that the county owns. Um, it is my intent to get rid of those properties or put them up for sale as soon as possible. But because of um um a Supreme Court case ruling of a case in Wisconsin that uh heirs of a foreclosed property filed a claim for excess proceeds beyond the back taxes and won. Uh, and then the Supreme Court ruled in their favor. Uh, Oregon and several other coun- uh states that uh that uh had the same type of system wherein you'd sell it for whatever you could get out of it and they kept the proceeds and everything. It had to be reworked in the state of Oregon as well. Last year during the short session, there was legislation that was passed that that started that process, but it didn't cover all the, it didn't cover everything. So there is legislation again now that is um that is supposed to clean that up and tell us how we're supposed to go about doing it. So until we have that guidance from the state on how we can proceed with foreclosed property sales, we had placed about a year ago, we placed a moratorium on selling those properties. What it's looking like is that definitely um the previous owner or heirs or anybody that might have a claim to it would be in line for those excess proceeds from foreclosed properties. The the sticking points were is how is that gonna be managed? And again, during the work, there was a works uh work group last summer that I was in and um the last proposal was that any excess proceeds uh would go from the state to or from the county to the state and be managed as unclaimed property. Is is where it was going to. Some of the other things, and I hope it doesn't because it'll make it more cumbersome um and costly and more costly, is that there were entities that wanted every foreclosed property be to be listed by a real estate agent. Um, and there's gonna be somewhat, some of these properties really are not very resellable. They wanna make sure that they get the full, that the, you know, heirs or anybody gets the full bang uh for the buck out of the out of the property. Um, and it is what it is. The property might be assessed for X number of dollars, but nobody's gonna pay that because the it's a rundown blighted piece of property. So I hope that part of it doesn't go through, but these are all things that they have to work out and give us direction on how we're gonna proceed, so. Again, I haven't heard of any homeless residing in our foreclosed properties, but it's our intent also to get rid of them as soon as we can. I I want them off our books. I don't wanna be liable for them. Get them back on the tax rules.
You have a long schedule.
I don't, off the top of my head, I'll I'll research it and I can get it to you, but I so so I wanted to wanted to just speak to that, but I don't have anything else. If there is nothing else. Make sure I look and nobody has a hand up just in case online or comments. I'll see anything that I missed. So if there's nothing else, then we shall stand adjourned at twelve forty-eight P M.
Is the biomass plant not working today? It's freezing.
I have not gotten any notifications.
Yeah, right.